My name is Kathleen Brown, Chair of the Virginia Beach School Board, and I call this meeting to order at 5:00 PM on May 6, 2025. This is a special school board meeting pursuant with bylaw 146 in the Code of Virginia 2.2-3707. Three or more school board members have requested that a special meeting be called Tuesday, May 6 at 5:00 PM at the School Administration Building, Building 6, at the Municipal Center, 2512 George Mason Drive, Virginia Beach, Virginia, for the following purposes. One, closed session for consultation with legal counsel regarding the status and impact of recent court orders impending federal lawsuits related to challenges to Federal Executive Order 14190 issued on 1/29/25. Two, presentation on status of federal lawsuits related to challenges to Federal Executive Order 14190 issued on 1/29/25. Three, information on motion to amend previous vote, namely to amend the April 8, 2025, school board resolution to comply with legal obligations in exchange for receiving federal financial assistance to pause the below listed portions of the April 8 resolution until the federal courts have ruled whether Executive Order 14190 can be enforced. A, Resolution Section 1, 3, 4, 5, and 6. B, Resolution Section 2, the second sentence, regarding suspension of all educational program offerings that do not comply with the above federal guidance, including but not limited to the Equity Plan, the Equity Dashboard, and any educational program offering that would not comply. Four, public comments regarding the information on the above motion to amend. Five, a vote on the motion to amend. With that, Madam Chair, I ask that you call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Present in the school board chamber are Chair Brown, Vice Chair Weems, Mr. Bowen Steele, Mr. Callan, Mr. Cummings, Ms. Felton, Dr. Green, Ms. Melnick, and Ms. Rogers.
Thank you, colleagues and members of the public present. I ask you to join me in a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance as you are able. Okay, at this time, I will take a motion to adopt the agenda as presented. Moved by Mr. Cummings, seconded by Ms. Rogers. Any discussion? Seeing none, I call for a vote to adopt the agenda as presented.
So, Madam Chair, we have nine ayes. The motion did pass for the adoption of the agenda as presented.
Thank you. The school board will prepare to go into closed session. Just for the public's awareness and the school board, we're going to have our closed session in the Einstein Lab down there so that the public can still sit in chambers. It's easier for the 11 of us to move, so that's what we're going to do. And we'll come back and read out of clothes when we're done with that presentation. Vice Chair Weems, would you please read the call for closed session?
I move that the school board recess in a closed session in accordance with exemptions to open meetings law set forth in Code of Virginia 2.2-3711, Part A, Paragraph 7 and 8, as amended to deliberate on the following matters. Seven, consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members or consultants pertaining to actual or probable litigation where such consultation or briefing in open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of this public body. For the purposes of this subdivision, probable litigation means litigation that has been specifically threatened or on which the public body or its legal counsel has a reasonable basis to believe will be convinced by or against a known party. Nothing in this subdivision shall be construed to permit the closure of a meeting merely because an attorney representing the public body is in attendance or is consulted on a matter. Eight, consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel. Nothing in this subdivision shall be construed to permit the closure of a meeting merely because an attorney representing the public body is in attendance or is consulted on a matter, namely to discuss: A, Status of pending federal litigation regarding Executive Order Number 14190 and implications for school board and school division regarding compliance; B, consultation with legal counsel regarding probable litigation and pending litigation matters.
Motion made by Vice Chair Weems, seconded by Ms. Melnick. Any discussion? Seeing none, I call for the vote to go into closed session as motioned.
So, Madam Chair, we have nine ayes. The motion did pass to go into closed session.
Okay, thank you.
早上好我是小雨今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六早上好今天是星期六我是小宇宙的主播早上好我是小宇宙的主播早上好我是小宇宙的主播早上好我是小宇宙的主播早上好我是小宇宙的主播早上好我是小宇宙的主播早上好我是小宇宙的主播早上好我是小宇宙的主播早上好我是小宇宙的主播早上好我是小宇宙的主播早上好我是小宇宙的主播早上好我是小宇宙的主播早上好我是小宇宙的主播早上好我是小宇宙的主播早上好我是小宇宙的主播早上好我是小宇宙的主播早上好我是小宇宙的主播早上好我是小宇宙的主播早上好我是小宇宙的主播早上好我是小宇宙的主播早上好我是小宇宙的主播早上好我是小宇宙的主播早上好我是小宇宙的主播早上好我是小宇宙的主播早上好我是小宇宙的主播早上好我是小宇宙的主播早上好我是小宇宙的主播早上好我是小宇宙的主播早上好我是小宇宙的主播早上好我是小宇宙的主播早上好我是小宇宙的主播早上好我是小宇宙的主播早上好我是小宇宙的主播早上好我是小宇宙的主播早上好我是小宇宙的主播早上好我是小宇宙的主播早上好我是小宇宙的主播早上好我是小宇宙的主播早上好我是小宇宙的主播早上好我是小宇宙的主播早上好我是小宇宙的主播早上好我是小宇宙的主播早上好我是小宇宙的主播早上好我是小宇宙的主播早上好我是小宇宙的主播早上好我是小宇宙的主播早上好我是小宇宙的主播早上好我是小宇宙的主播早上好我是小宇宙的主播早上好我是小宇宙的主播早上好我是小宇宙的主播早上好我是小宇宙的主播早上好我是小宇宙的主播早上好我是小宇宙的主播早上好我是小宇宙的主播早上好我是小宇宙的主播早上好我是小宇宙的主播早上好我是小宇宙的主播早上好我是小宇宙的主播早上好我是小宇宙的主播早上好我是小宇宙的主播早上好我是小宇宙的主播早上好我是小宇宙的主播早上好我是小宇宙的主播早上好我是小宇宙的主播早上好我是小宇宙的主播早上好我是小宇宙的主播早上好我是小宇宙的主播早上好我是小宇宙的主播早上好我是小宇宙的主播早上好我是小宇宙的主播早上好我是小宇宙的主播早上好我是小宇宙的主播早上好我是小宇宙的主播早上好我是小宇宙的主播早上好我是小宇宙的主播早上好我是小宇宙的主播早上好我是小宇宙的主播早上好我是小宇宙的主播早上好我是小宇宙的主播早上好我是小宇宙的主播早上好我是小宇宙的主播早上好我是小宇宙的主播早上好我是小宇宙的主播早上好我是小宇宙的主播早上好我是小宇宙的主播早上好我是小宇宙的主播早上好我是小宇宙的主播早上好我是小宇宙的主播早上好我是小宇宙的主播早上好我是小宇宙的主播早上好我是小宇宙的主播早上好我是小宇宙的主播早上好我是小宇宙的主播早上好我是小宇宙的主播早上好我是小宇宙的主播早上好我是小宇宙的主播早上好我是小宇宙的主播早上好我是小宇宙的主播早上好我是小宇宙的主播早上好我是小宇宙的主播早上好我是小宇宙的主播早上好我是小宇宙的主播早上好我是小宇宙的主播早上好我是小宇宙的主播早上好我是小宇宙的主播早上好我是小宇宙的主播早上好我是小宇宙的主播早上好我是小宇宙的主播早上好我是小宇宙的主播早上好我是小宇宙的主播早上好我是小宇宙的主播早上好我是小宇宙的主播早上好我是小宇宙的主播早上好我是小宇宙的主播早上好我是小宇宙的主播早上好我是小宇宙的主播早上好我是小宇宙的主播早上好我是小宇宙的主播早上好我是小宇宙的主播早上好我是小宇宙的主播早上好我是小宇宙的主播早上好我是小宇宙的主播
Whereas the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach has convened a closed meeting on this day pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas Section 2.2-3712 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by this school board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be it resolved that the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which the certification applies, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered.
Okay, is there a motion on the certification of closed, moved by Mr. Cummings, seconded by Mr. Callen, any discussion? Seeing none, I call for the votes to certify closed session.
So Madam Chair, we have nine ayes, the motion to pass for the certification of closed session.
Thank you, we are now on to the presentation of status of federal lawsuits related to challenges to Federal Executive Order 14190, we welcome Kami Lanetti, School Board Attorney.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair of School Board Members, and this is Woodhouse, I'm Kami Lanetti, School Board Attorney, my intent with this presentation is just to set the stage for where things are procedurally, it will not be an in-depth legal analysis, we're just going to give you some basic information so everybody's on the same page. Again, on January 29, 2025, Executive Order 14190, ending racial indoctrination in K-12 schooling, was issued, and what is stated in there was, in recent years however, parents have witnessed schools indoctrinate their children in radical anti-American ideologies while deliberately blocking parental oversight, imprinting anti-American, subversive, harmful, and false ideologies on our nation's children, not only violates longstanding and anti-discrimination civil rights in many cases, but usurps basic parental authority, so this was the opening intent of the executive order, it then went on to list certain unacceptable practices. The Second Order 14190 was followed on February 14, 2025, by the US Department of Education's Dear Colleague Letter, which explained how the US Department of Education interpreted the January 29th Executive Order. Dear colleague letters, sometimes referred to as DCLs, are administrative documents used by federal governments primarily by the US Department of Education to advise the public how an agency will proceed to interpret or enforce the statute, regulation, or court order procedure. The February 14, 2025 letter stated that it was explaining and reiterating existing legal requirements under Title VI of the Civil Rights Act of 1964, the Equal Protection Clause of the United States Constitution, other authorities. The DCL noted that the following was no longer acceptable: Toxically indoctrinating students with false premises that the US is built on systemic and structural racism and advanced discriminatory policies and practices under the banner of diversity, equity, and inclusion, DEI programs discriminate by preferencing certain racial groups and teaching that certain racial groups bear unique moral burdens that others do not. DCL states that the US Department of Education will vigorously enforce its existing interpretation of federal law within 14 days, and that included compliance with anti-discrimination laws as a condition of receiving federal funding, and that might be required of the state education and then the local education associations. Schools were then warned to ensure that their policies and actions comply with existing civil rights law and cease reliance on proxies and indirect means for race decisions, and cease reliance on third-party contractors, and they went ahead and created the Department of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Hotline Reporting System. That was then followed on February 28, 2025, by the US Department of Education issuing an FAQs, Frankly Asked Question Document, the FAQs stated not to operate policies or programs that treat students differently based on race, engage in racial stereotyping, or create hostile environments, it specifically noted that social, emotional learning and culturally responsive teachings were certain practices that were under consideration. What it did note is that programs focused on cultures and heritage do not violate Title VI unless they discourage members of certain races not to attend or the created hostile environments of those who do attend. On March 14, the US Department of Education opened Title VI investigations against 45 universities based on the Dear Colleague Letter. On April 3, 2024, the US Department of Education then issued a press release that directed each state Department of Education to certify compliance, the anti-discrimination laws, in order to continue to receive federal funding. State Department of Education's required to collect certifications from local education agencies stating that the use of DEI programs to advantage one person's race over another's is contrary to Title VI, and threatened serious action which would include loss of federal funding, recoupment of previously dispersed funds, and trouble damages and civil penalties under the False Claims Act. On March 20, 2025, the US Department of Education also required that the SEAs, the State Education Associations, and the LEAs, the Local Education Associations, certify compliance with FERPA and PPRA regarding parents' rights to access records about their children, which that certification would then be due on April 30. On April 3, 2025, the Virginia Department of Education notified all Virginia Local Education Associations the requirement to provide written certification by April 10. An extension was granted until April 24, that was based on one of the cases that we'll Just a quick reminder of what Title VI of the Civil Rights Act said, on the screen is the Title VI of the Civil Rights Act of 1964, the language Title VI is not changed since its adoption, however courts and previous agents have allowed for discrimination against one group when the purpose of discrimination is to serve a compelling state or federal interest. In most cases, the compelling interest is to create a more diverse student or employee body to balance opportunities when the statistics indicate that certain races or ethnic groups are disadvantaged, or to correct prior discriminatory practices that have had an adverse effect on certain races. When challenged in courts, the body that is utilizing race ethnicity is to take action must meet a very high standard, it's called strict scrutiny, before the court will allow the body to continue to take actions based on ethnicity. Previous US Department of Education administrations have required school divisions to take action to address disparities based on race and ethnicity. In those cases, US Department of Education looks at the statistics related to the action that a school division took, if school division's action, through race neutral, honest face, resulted in disparate impact on another race or protected category, then the school division was required to take action to address the disparity. Access to higher-level programs, referrals for student discipline, referrals for gifted identification, referrals for student discipline are examples of those types of required actions. Recently, the Trump administration announced through a different executive order that would no longer allow for disparate impact analysis to be used in federal programming. Before us are three pending federal cases that affect Executive Order 14190, one is in the New Hampshire District Court for the New Hampshire Federal Court, one is in the District Court for Maryland, and one is in the District Court for the District of Columbia. All three suits were currently filed relative to Executive Order 14190, and there are other lawsuits against different executive orders, but the ones that we are interested are these three lawsuits. We're going to focus on these lawsuits that are related to this, and they were filed in three different courts, which is important. As a brief reminder, the National Education Association, the New Hampshire affiliate of the National Education Association, and the Center for Black Educators filed a lawsuit in this district court in New Hampshire, there were five counts that they went after, the court then did issue a preliminary injunction after a hearing, again, a preliminary injunction is a preliminary order that the court does based on limited information, is not the final decision in the case. In this particular case, you'll see on the board that the court ordered the preliminary injunction, it found that there was potential success in the merits because of the vagueness of what constituted unlawful DEI programs, it found that there would be irreparable harm because there was a potential for First Amendment violations and loss of funding, and it also said balance of the equities, that there would be substantial harm, therefore was the balance in favor of the plaintiffs. Interesting about this particular scope of injunction, it is limited to the plaintiffs with the NEA, they are members, which could be any state affiliations, and again, in Virginia, the Virginia Education Association members are also members of the National Education Association, so therefore it would apply to our employees who are members of the EEA, and any organization that employs, contracts, or does business with the plaintiffs and their members, so that in this case makes us, Virginia Beach, liable under this particular The second case is American Federation of Teachers in the District Court of Maryland, again, this is the American Federation of Teachers, the American Federation is Maryland affiliate, the American Sociological Association, and unique in this case, you have a school district, which is Eugene, Oregon, School District 4J. In this case, the court found that there would be a success in the merits because of the Administrative Procedures Act violations for failure to comply with the notice and comment periods, it also found that in the American Administrative Procedures Act, you cannot, as a federal agency interfere with the curriculum of a local education association, there's a potential for arbitrary and capricious decisions, and there were potential for First Amendment violations. It found that there would be irreparable harm because of potential First Amendment violations, and it found the balance of equities and interests favored the plaintiffs. What this case did not do is it did not deal with the certification requirement because it argued that the plaintiffs had failed to mention or provide sufficient evidence on the certification, so it did not enjoin the certification. It did stay the Dear Colleague Letter, but the FAQs and DEI portal were not stayed, and they do not need to, and the US Department of Education would not be required to reinstate prior administrative guidance on Title VI. The final case is the NAACP versus the Department of Education in the District of Columbia. What's interesting about this particular case is that it took a different view than the other courts. The court noted that the alleged First Amendment violations were actions of school boards and school administrations, they were not actions by the federal government, the court noted that there's no evidence that the Virginia Beach, sorry, the court alleged the alleged First Amendment violations again were actions of the school board and school administrators, not the federal documents, the court noted that there's no evidence that the Virginia Beach School Board, which was cited in this particular hearing, would be worse course if the documents were enjoined. The court also noted that cannot enjoin most of the actions that the NAACP was requiring, such as returning funding to universities and implementing prior policies. It denied the injunction on the First Amendment basis because the NAACP had not made out sufficient facts for it. The court then turned to the American Administrative Procedures claims, and at this point, they were looking as to whether the Dear Colleague Letter and the FAQs constituted a legislative rule that carries a force of law and would then require compliance with the Administrative Procedures Act, or whether this was simply a matter of a legislative interpretation, which was not subject to the Administrative Procedures Act. Again, the court analyzed and determined that the conditional language of the documents makes some guidance, and reminds educational institutions of pre-existing obligations to comply with existing law and not new interpretations. Therefore, the court found that it was not a legislative rule, it was an interpretive rule, and because it was not a legislative rule, it was not required to comply with the Administrative Procedures Act for notice and comment or publication in the federal register. However, this court did find standing for the plaintiffs in this case because they said the FAQs and the Dear Colleague Letter were void for vagueness challenge because they did not give fair information to the public as to what would be a violation of potentially illegal DEI, and therefore it granted the injunction for the void for vagueness issue only. Again, as mentioned, the federal district court generally deal with federal administrative law issues, and Sarah, we tend to pay a little bit more attention to this district court because it has more jurisdiction in this area. Quickly, what are the next steps? These cases will then proceed on to briefings on there, as mentioned, the preliminary injunction is an early step in a case to maintain the status quo or prevent injury. Once they go on, they will proceed to briefings, they'll do discoveries, they may do depositions, this could take several months or longer, you'll then go to hearings before the court, the courts will then issue opinions. In the meantime, the preliminary injunctions themselves can be appealed, on this one, they will be appealed to different courts of appeals, in cases as federal courts, they will go to the Court of Appeals in the federal circuits, and they could go on to the US Department of Education, so you may see different decisions on cases coming out of different jurisdictions, and the preliminary injunctions may or may not stand, that will not necessarily affect the cases going forward. What you may also see is that the US Department of Education may provide clarification, because it's very clear from all the court orders that the vagueness on the documents needs to be corrected, and therefore, if I was the US Department of Education, I would probably read those and start making some corrections, and we've seen that in the past where the US Department of Education will issue clarifying letters, so it's possible the US Department of Education could issue clarifying letters, which may then affect how the courts make decisions. And again, I will note that the US Department of Education has done some recent investigations against K-12, about two days ago, that hit the Evanston, Skokie, Illinois School Board, District Number 66, on a race discrimination matter, and that came out of a complaint filed by a teacher through the Southeast Asian Legal Education Foundation, also noticed that Chicago Public Schools is currently being investigated by the US Department of Education, so they are taking action against K-12 and not just the higher education. And at that point, I can answer any questions for the school board, but that is just to lay the procedural areas for where we are with the courts right now. And at that point, I can answer any questions for the school board, but that is just to lay the procedural areas for where we are with the courts right now.
Ms. Melnick.
Um, Mrs. Lynetti, the Virginia Department of Education. Has training in all. One hurt, one hundred thirty four school districts across the Commonwealth called culturally responsive practices, have they paused that work?
Not to my knowledge, I'm assuming that looking at it just as we're looking.
Okay, so that has not been paused, all right. I'll yield while, while I'm trying to.
Mr. Cummings.
So I've, I've spent a lot of time um. Reading through these cases and analyzing them and, you know, trying to figure out what everything means. And also just talking to various stakeholders and. Searching the cases, searching interpretations as well, and so. My biggest concern um that I have, and this is where I think the public needs clarification. Is around the vagus, vagueness um ruling from the N A A C P case. And how that can potentially infringe on First Amendment rights of our students to. Receive information um, you know. I think my concerns specifically are around if we are actively reviewing programs. One, what is the actual criteria that we're utilizing to review? Two, that criteria from the executive order has just been deemed constitutionally vague. And three, does the reviewing of those programs. Actually step upon our, our First Amendment rights of our students, I mean, this is what the judge says. And so I'm trying to understand and help me understand. Like, how do we interpret that as a school board, how do we put that into, you know, I'm a local pragmatist. We built something based on a law and policy. That policy was said, hey, you're too, you're too vague. Now, what do we, what, what, how do you speak to me about like the vagueness, the First Amendment issues? What does that look like now for Virginia Beach City Public Schools?
Let, let's start with First Amendment. The First Amendment, of course, is the First Amendment on Bill of Rights with the first freedom of speech, association, the right to receive information. If there is any potential impingement by the government, the government will generally find that that in itself is an injury. So what they're looking, is there a chilling effect, are you. Taking actions to prevent yourself from being fired because you're violating this, because losing funds on that, so that's what they're looking for in this case. On there, so that's where the First Amendment comes into this issue, vagueness. Void for vagueness is did the government's rules. Sufficiently provide you information for you to understand what you can and cannot do. All three courts have said that appears to be a problem with the language as provided in the dear colleagues letter and the F A Qs. And that there needs to be further information on that. So what that potentially could mean is that I'm taking, I'm choosing not to teach a course, I'm choosing not to associate or say things. Because I'm not sure if I'm going to be violating that. What the courts are saying, they have not made a final determination, these are preliminary matters. They say, based on the limited amount of information we have, it appears that there might be a reason for us. To halt things because potentially this could be a violation, it is not a final determination by any means because they have not. Provided sufficient information for that, so what they're saying at this point. The courts, at least what I'm seeing consistent with the courts is. You probably, US Department of Education need to provide a little bit more information. Now, there are examples in the F A Qs and the dear colleague letters, there are some, and we find some, they're just not a lot of examples. One of the phrases they use is illegal D E I, and that seems to be what the courts are focusing, what does that mean? But again, it's not devoid of it, it's just not a lot of examples at this point, and that appears to be where the court says you need to do it. Now, when you're looking at that, usually under the Administrative Procedures Act, when you have a new rule. You put it out there and people comment, we've seen that with other acts, we've seen that at the local level too. People say, they would have pointed, hey, what, what does this mean, does this violate that? And that would give the agency an opportunity to clarify that and bring that back out, that's where a notice and comment period might have helped. But we, we saw one court say, well, it doesn't have to be, you didn't have to go through the notice and comment period because they're not creating new law, they're just enforcing prior law. Two of the other courts have said, well, we do think it should have gone through, that was a final determination on there, so again. The fact that the courts have found that there's a likelihood that they may proceed does not, is not the same thing as a court determination that these are unconstitutional, that has to come at a later time.
So I guess my concern is just, you know, around the potential risk of violating our students' First Amendment rights, as the judge says. On their right to receive information based on decisions. Poten- potential decisions from um. Policy guided by, policy that was developed by something that was vague, now defined as constitutionally vague. And I think, you know, as we think about, you know, as you mentioned, we do employ our, you know, folks from the N E A, so there's the injunction. And I, just walk us through for the public, like, unpack that a little more, what that means, I think, for Virginia Beach City Schools. And the public, what it means to have like that injunction since, you know, we'd be part of the employing body of.
Again, reminder, the injunction isn't against you, the injunction is against the federal government. Federal government cannot enforce, depending which court you are, the dear colleague letter or the F A Qs right now, they're not supposed to come in and take away your federal funding. Courts have said they still are required to enforce anti discrimination laws, which is why I point out two cases have recently come up. On there, so it's not against your doing, if, if you were to suspend a program, stop a program. You might potentially, if you prevented a group from meeting and said you can't meet because we're not sure you comply with this law. You might be interfering with the, the First Amendment rights. At this time, I've not heard that we have suspended a program, stopped a student group from meeting. We haven't um stopped any programs going forward that I'm aware of.
Yeah, I think some folks would probably make a case that singling out groups and programs to review would actually probably be stepping along. Um, those First Amendment rights, I don't know, I'm not a lawyer, so I'm, something that I'm thinking about. I think that's all the questions I have right now.
Ms. Rogers.
Hi, thank you so much, um, Mrs. Lynetti, for your presentation. I wanna kind of think about. The resolution on April eighth and what we were asking. And I guess I have questions on what our practice was with regard to the suspension. That we currently have in place, were we in violation of Title Six prior to April eighth? In any of our programming?
I'm not aware that we're in violation, I do know that the, using the D E I name was potentially going to open us up to litigation. Were looking at that, so that was one of the things that the F A Q came out, so. We were already looking at that before your resolution came in, we knew the base of the universities that they had changed that name.
Okay, but that was based on the executive order, not based on us violating Title Six, correct?
Correct, we did not believe we were in violation of Title Six, we took that action because we knew that was a direct order, we would. To investigation that we didn't want to be involved.
Prior to the executive order, we were not in violation of Title Six.
I am not aware that we were in violation of Title Six, but that would not have, again, I didn't look through every program, every curriculum that you have and how the federal government's interpreting it.
Okay, and then prior to the executive order, were we in violation of any state law with our programming?
All right, why don't we limit this to title, D E I and Title Six. All laws, I can't deal with.
I just mean with, with. We were following our state laws, is what I'm asking, but prior to the executive order coming out, and we were follow, following Title Six. That's my question, and, and you said yes to Title Six.
Which is what your superintendent told you, that he believed that you were in compliance, we thought we were in compliance, we did know that you. The new order said you cannot have the D E I programs.
Right.
On there and some of the equity issues, and we needed to remove some of that language.
Right, and so this is where I'm having, um, as you like to say, heartburn, is that. The injunction is against the executive order that says we have to, you know, remove D E I. And so are we acting based on an executive order that's now in an injunction, would that put us in liability? And before you answer, I also want, just for the public to understand. This is an aside, I guess, um, there's a publication called Education Weekly that is. Um, a national publication, and every year they have leaders in learning. And that is recognizing the best of the best in our nation. In twenty twenty five, our own Mr. Ty Harris. Is, has been named the leader in learning for our practices in diversity, equity and inclusion. And I think it's something to be said that we were the people leading the nation on our best practices. Not on something that we were doing illegally, we were the leaders in best practice. And so it's important to understand that.
Excuse me, um, we're, we're in the business part of our meeting, so clapping in between speakers is fine, but not clapping in between school board members, thank you.
Anyway, so Mrs. Lynetti, I just want to make sure that. What is our liability if we are going to go ahead and suspend these programs based on an executive order that's under current injunction?
All right, I do want to clarify for you that intervening case, there was the United States Supreme Court case, the Students for Fair Admission versus Harvard and the U N C case. Which has changed some of the interpretation on the law, so prior to this time, we were following. Guidance of federal law, that law has changed how that's interpreted is one of the things that these court cases will deal with. So longstanding interpretations of Title Six have changed since twenty twenty three, so that's something we're having to deal with, so that's a new issue for us. They, and you've seen, uh, federal governments are allowed to. Do their own interpretation, the new federal government agencies coming in are interpreting it differently, so the fact that we might have been in compliance before, we are not currently.
You're saying we're not in compliance right now?
If we are following the executive order, they're interpreting it differently.
But is an executive order law?
No, it is interpretation, so.
Okay, but it's not law, because.
That will be one of the things that the, the courts are going to determine whether it's a legislative rule or a legislative, an interpretative ruling.
Okay, because this is where, like, the executive order, you just said it's not law.
It depends on whether, as I say, one of the issues you're dealing with is whether it is a legislative rule. A statute that you have to follow or an interpretive ruling, depending, and that will be something that the courts look at.
But as of right now, we don't have an answer.
No, you are a preliminary, preliminary decision with the courts.
Right, and so. Our practices prior to the executive order were not illegal, we established that. So I'm just concerned that we are moving ourselves into a position. To be litigated against based on what we're currently doing, and I'll yield.
Ms. Fulton.
Thank you Chair Brown, uh, attorney Lynn A, um. Has this division, and there's two things I want to talk with you about, but I want to start with vagueness first. Because it's one of the things that seem to be on the table, especially not only with, uh, some of the, my colleagues, but also with your students. Who's asking questions about what are our next steps, because what we are doing will impact them. When we move forward, so I'm being asked questions that I really cannot answer because of what you're saying. The interpretation has come down or the executive order that has come down. It, it leaves me to ask this question, has the, has the division received any formal? Or in, or any informal direction and guidance of what we are to halt, stop. Or not move forward when it comes to D E I, this is a concern because your students, they are asking me. Now that you have, now that we are moving forward to and have done to gut. The diversity, the education, the diversity equity policy, they need to know now. Are we gonna go in and just gut it and leave it at that, what protection do they have? Because when the students spoke on April the twenty second, they spoke loud and clear. Not only that, when I attended the Superintendent Advisory Board. With several students, over twenty students in the room, and the main topic of the day was. Where are we moving, what are next steps when it comes to protecting them as being diverse student, and you had a diverse set of students there, so my question, go back to my question. Have we received any information or formal informal of guidance of what we pluck out, what we halt and what we don't do? Have we, have we received anything from them?
Let me start with your anti discrimination laws remain in effect, and the federal government has said they intend to enforce them. So we've not pulled out any of our anti discrimination on harassment laws, those are still on the books, they are still in effect. What you got as far as guidance came out a little bit in the executive order, it came out more in the dear colleague letter from February fourteenth. There are some guidance in there and the F A Qs that came out on the twenty eighth, there's some guidance there.
Ms. Melnick.
The operative word in this entire scenario is the word vague. And our division has reacted to even what the courts are deeming right now vagueness, I mean, we've. We've taken stuff off our walls. We, our schools are missing. Art. We are an unbalanced board right here, just visually, and we, we reacted so quickly. And we have no direction. Every judge has used the word vague. We're using the word vague, we don't know what to tell our families, we don't know what to tell our students, we don't know what to tell each other, quite frankly. We have no idea. And so. It, it's why a group of people just asked for a pause, and I'm sorry that the public, we got so many emails about revotes, it's not a revote. It's a pause, it's just, okay, let's stop and let's get some direction. And then we can, we can go from there, we are, we are pausing programs. I don't, I, we are, there are things that we are investigating right now, and we don't even know what we're supposed to investigate. Or that, we don't know what the trickle down effect is, and this is just really unfair to our community. We don't have answers, I don't know how to answer the emails that are coming in. The chair is answering them, but it's a, it's a thank you for your, thank you for your input, because she doesn't know what to say either. And so I just want to be fair to my community. It's, it's really the one time I feel like I haven't had an answer in, in the ten and a half years I've been sitting here, that I haven't had an answer for my community. And I just want to pause and wait for these judges, and then we go from there.
Vice Chair Weems.
I will take the liberty to. To comment on. Our current chair as the chair before her and the chair before that and the chair before that. Answers many, many emails, and I appreciate all the chairs answering emails, and she is doing so in consistency with the former chair, so I appreciate that. And as far as a revote, I'm, I'm a little confused because the majority of us voted on April eighth. And now we're here again, you can call it whatever you want to, but um. I, you know, I've been on the board in twenty, for twenty something years, and this is the first. Um, it's, it's quite interesting, it's, it's disappointing, but um. So, so perhaps it's not quoted as a revote, but is, it's revisiting. What the will of this board decided and voted on just a couple of weeks ago. Uh, Ms. Lynetti, um, so these preliminary injunctions are very interpretive, correct? They can change, um, they can be overruled or moved to a different court. And so do we have an answer when we're gonna get complete a hundred percent? This is what you do or don't do?
No, ma'am.
Okay, thank you, that's all I have to say, thank you.
Ms. Melnick.
Um, you mentioned, and I want to clarify for the public, that the, the United States Department of Education has the ability to go back and to clarify. Separate from what's happening in the courts right now.
Correct, and that happens periodically.
Okay, so it, it, it could be with all of this pushback. That they're working on language right now that might help aid school districts in figuring this whole thing out.
And that's a possibility, which may change the nature of the court hearings, depending what they put out.
Okay, thank you.
I'm gonna go to Dr. Green first, um, because everyone else has had the chance to speak.
Thank you, Madam Chair, um, I'm following back up to what Mrs. Weems and Mrs. Melnick. Uh, indicated about what the request is. We understand that the majority has already. Instituted and start implementing the resolution from April eighth. However, there are things in that resolution that have not taken place yet. And that is what the request is for, is to pause until we know how things are going to be adjudicated in the court system. Why should we continue to penalize students at the whim of adults trying to, you know, hold fast on a lot of probabilities that we don't know what the final outcome is going to be? So again, it is pausing, it's not asking for a revote. Things have already been done, like we've retitled the office of what used to be Equity. We're not asking for you to go back and restore the name. We know that's not going to happen. Things such as coming off the walls. We know pictures are not going back up on the walls. The pause is designed to prevent any more things coming off the walls. We also have a policy review coming up that it's significant. And again, this has not been adjudicated yet. And I, it could be a long process. It could come to us in three weeks. But in the meantime, we should not continue to be jerking students around. Today is this, tomorrow is that. Let's put the students prior, make them our priority for consistency right now that they know based on how we have implemented things thus far. We get it. We know what's not going to be revoked on. The request again is to pause the nonsense.
Ms. Fulton?
Um, for the reason because I hit the button to speak, uh, Dr. Green has addressed what I was going to address as well. We are not asking to revoke or restate. We are asking for a pause because the word is vague. And if some of our staff members are saying we're going to hold off, we can't use that, they're in vagueness too. We're, we're just asking for it, you know, but um, not to split hairs, but when I hear the word ending racial indoctrination within our school system, it rekindled a fact that I know that happened with indoctrination. And it was done with American Indians. Took them off the plantation and it happened until, it happened, it continued to 19, in the ni- in the 60s. Took students and, and their aim was to force assimilation. They put them in the education system. And they gen- and they, um, took away their culture. Read it, look it up. Sixty Minutes had a long doc, had a long document on that how they did that. Not only there's awful things were done with they, uh, how they, uh, had burial grounds of those students. Mass graves. They're still, still looking them up today. So when I hear this word racial indoctrination, I don't see that happening here in our system. But it has happened in our history. Don't take my word for it. Read up on it. Look it, look it up. Indigenous in this country. So I don't think that's happening, especially when we took the time out to structure an educational diversity equity policy to make sure that that would never be happening. Um, some words are just thrown out of the air, but that one, indoctrination, and I could go a little deeper. But time won't allow me. There have been some indoctrination done. Actually taking your, your language, your culture, your god in this country. But that's not what we are doing in our system. And I'm appalled that they, they would put this in an executive order, ending racial indoctrination.
Ms. Rogers?
Um, thanks. Um, I just wanted to follow up really quick. Um, Mrs. Lynetti. Um, has there been a time that the board was asked, or the school division was asked to change or revisit decisions based on a change um, of federal state law?
I'm not sure we've had quite this situation. I know during COVID, we were flipping back and forth very quickly on things because we didn't, they were changing.
Right, so when things changed, then we, the board was asked to change and it's actually a great metaphor that anyone think about. Like especially during COVID, when they were talking about the medical and whether or not we should mask, unmask. I was a, I, I was a teacher in the classroom back then. And so the board was changing decisions based on the information they were getting as it came down, correct? So it's not unheard of for this board to be asking for change because we have new information coming from the courts. Is that reasonable?
I can't think of a direct example where we've had something like this.
I'm making the comparison. It's, it's similar to when we had information coming out of the medical field about what we should be doing and we made decisions based on that. And my point is, is that I believe we're not, this isn't to be sneaky. We have new information. We are asking for a pause because we have new information. Thank you.
Mr. Cummings?
Yeah, I'll reiterate, um, some of the things that my colleagues have said, that we're busy people. I have a full-time job. I have a family. There's no sneaky agenda to have more school board meetings. Um, we have discipline meetings. We have committee work. I'm married. I got two kids. I'm almost 20 years in, y'all. Like, my family misses me, all right? This is a unique scenario, a unique situation. Never, and we just learned, when in his I mean, I'm new, right? Like, when have we had executive orders that have been issued? That then get, you know, court cases rolling within weeks from three judges? And they're not even all judges I politically agree with. There are two of the judges on the opposite side of the political aisle. So I don't see this as an activist judge case. I see the rulings to be very clear with the aspects that we struggled with on April 8th. Like, when we were sitting up here asking, like, what does this mean if we suspend this policy? What are the programs impacted? Those are the very things that I was asking up here on the dais. And this is my thoughts for the public is read the rulings. Don't go read the blogs about the rulings. Sit down, and if you want to be lazy, you could upload a chat GPT, maybe ask it to summarize it. And you could, and that might not even be right. But sit down and read the highlights. Read the rulings. The judge says, would courses taught by professors who promote the view that systemic racism exists and that the race can be central to one's experience and identity be unlawful? Does a school's black pre-law student union open to all students nonetheless treat black students differently on the basis of race? The challenged documents provide no answers to those questions and no clear boundaries of the forbidden areas to guide schools' compliance with a certification or to the limited department enforcement actions. We are tasked as a school board with making policy and we are given an executive order that is extremely vague, that now puts us at risk of potential First Amendment violations. That's what the judge says. That's not a Matt Cummings opinion. That is what is said in this NAACP case by a judge I don't politically agree with. And so at the end of the day, if they want to issue executive orders, that's their right. But they got to do a better job of writing policy. Because this puts our, this impacts our local kids. I mean, the kids are asking, like, what programs are impacted? We don't know. What courses are impacted? We don't know. If we make a guess and we make the wrong guess, that steps on the First Amendment rights. I thought we were about the Constitution. And that is clearly what this says. So we're asking for a pause. I think it's within common sense to see what is being said at the, the court levels and being, hey, not, hey, let's change everything on this resolution, but let's pause the implementation until litigation comes. Or bring better, bring forward policy that is compliant legally. And, you know, doesn't address, or addresses the concerns within the judges and what they've stated. So I encourage once again, public, you know, pull the, pull up the court rulings, read through them, see the concerns that they've had. And those are the real concerns that I think as policymakers, that why are we here today? Matt doesn't want more meanings in his life, all right? But what I do want is justice for our kids. I want our kids and their First Amendment rights to be protected, to receive information. And I want, um, us to have a clear guiding document to guide policy. And I think that is extremely fair for us. And these court cases all agree with that.
Ms. Rogers, um, since you've had the opportunity to speak a few times, if you could just be succinct in your remarks, we have one more presentation from Ms. Lynetti before we get to public comment.
Succinct it is. So the depart- um, one of the rulings, the, um, court said that the department may not direct, supervise, or control curriculum, instruction, textbooks, or library selections, nor may it act on the higher education level to censor silence viewpoints it disfavors. Um, to me, this is important because it means that the courts have affirmed that the executive branch of the federal government does not have the right to tell Virginia Beach what we can and cannot teach in our schools. And that we have the right to control what's taught and what needs, and we need to retain that right. That's something that I promised when I made my oath, is that I would serve Virginia Beach City Public Schools. And I want to make sure that our rights as a school board are maintained, that we get to maintain control. This is part of my issue with us complying with an executive order that is still under litigation. Thanks.
All right, um, Ms. Lynetti, um, let's move on to the information on motion to amend.
This is the motion that is in the notice to call. Specifically, they're asking to amend the previous vote, namely to amend the April 8th, 2025 school board resolution, which was titled to comply with legal obligations in exchange for receiving federal financial assistance. To pause, that's the amendment, to pause the below listed portions of the April 8th resolution until the federal courts have ruled whether an executive order 14190 can be enforced, and specifically the sections that they're asking to pause in the resolution are section 1, 3, 4, 5, and 6. Under section 2, and I'll bring these up for you in a second, res- resolution, section 2. In the second sentence, because the first part of the sentence had to do with changing the name of the apartment, that's already done. The second sentence regarding suspension of all educational program offerings that do not comply with the above federal guidance, including but not limited to the Equity Plan, the Equity Dashboard, and any educational program offerings that would not comply. So these are sections from, these are the, um, there are four sections out of the school board resolution from April 8th. Section 1, so we've highlighted those portions that we're asking, that we'll be asking to pause. The school board of City of Virginia Beach, the school board directs the superintendent or designated to work with legal counsel for the school board to take the necessary steps to comply with federal guidance under Title VI. Two, not the first sentence, but the second part, which we just read, had to do with the suspension of educational programs. Oh no. Okay, I messed that one up. All right, Gina, I may need to get back my technical skills and throw me off here. Okay. Three, the school board directs the superintendent to suspend Policy 5.4 until the policy review committee has brought recommended changes to the school board for approval no later than May 31st, 2025. Four, the school board directs the superintendent to designate to work with legal counsel for the school board to suspend any portion of the 2025 or 2030 strategic framework that does not comply with the above guidance, including but not limited to all references to equity, equity emphasis, diversified workforce, the Equity Dashboard, and racial emphasis. Five, the school board directs the superintendent or designated to recommend modification to the 2025 and 2020 2030 strategic framework to be in compliance with the above guidance for information no later than May 15th, 2025. Six, the school board directs the superintendent or designated to work with legal counsel for the school board to evaluate employment, contractors, and purchasing practices to ensure consistency. And we did not rec- there, the pause did not include section 7 and section 8, which are the other where for, their four clauses. So that's consistent with the motion. So that's for everybody. And I think you do have in your package a copy of the resolution.
Okay, seeing no discussion, we will move on to public comment. The school board will now hear public comments from citizens and delegations who signed up with the school board clerk prior to noon today related to the motion to amend the April 8th, 2025 resolution as discussed. The purpose for the public comment section is for the school board to offer an orderly form to receive comments related to the motion during the meeting. I call upon all speakers and all persons in the chambers to be civil in discussion and decorum. Whatever views you wish to express, the school board wants to hear from you and ensure that all viewpoints and perspectives are heard. The best way to do this is for all of us to strive for civility and respect. Madam Clerk, would you please announce our first speaker?
Madam Chair, before I announce the speakers, I want to make a note that Speaker number 15, Speaker number 20, and Speaker number 37, all canceled. Uh, number 15, number 20, and number 37.
Thank you.
Okay, our first speakers are our student speakers. We have Hope Paninski, Madeline Sheets, and Nash Phillips.
And I, if I could just ask that as your names are called to line up, if you could, um, line up in the hall so that we can get everybody up. Thank you. Go ahead.
Great. Um, good evening. My name is Hope Paninski. I am a junior at First Colonial High School in the Legal Studies Academy. As a student, I have been affected every day by so-called DEI policies. Policies that promote diversity, equity, and inclusion are the only reason I am able to pursue my passions. For example, policies such as diversity have actually encouraged the acceptance of students in my academy by academic merit, contrary to what right-wing talking points may suggest. By encouraging the inclusion of more students, the rosters have been diversified to incorporate students that don't fit the typical mold and doesn't encourage an exclusive, uh, exclusion purely because of what a person looks like, but instead by their academics. Claiming otherwise may seem like, uh, minority groups aren't academic weapons, but this claim would be easily dropped if you stepped foot in my school. Equity policies such as 504 plans or open exploration of different learning types have encouraged my development. I am a student with ADHD and anxiety and I didn't diagnose myself with it. I was tested almost two years ago and honestly, looking back, if I would have been tested sooner, I would have had a better experience in understanding myself and why I behave in a way that people see as odd and excessive. With the 504 plan, 504 plan that I use all the time, I am able to talk to my counselors whenever needed and have access to additional resources that I need. Inclusion is where I feel the real problem lies in this policy. Clubs such as Student Asian Union, Bible Club, GSA, and Women in STEM allow groups to get together and share ideas they have in common. You know what I find particularly interesting about these clubs is that even if you aren't part of that specific group, they allow you to join and learn about them. They aren't exclusive and they aren't trying to indoctrinate your kids, as Ms. Felton previously mentioned. What they are trying to do is provide safe spaces for students that might not be the average student who feel unsafe and alienated in their everyday life. I believe that if you are parents who truly care about your children, you will want them to find a place where they feel comfortable and safe. Many of you might not have kids who feel this way, but we need to think about the kids who are constantly being told by people who support these policies like this, that safe space, their safe spaces are wrong and are dangerous because they don't fit the older conservative ideology. Every day I work my butt off trying to protect my friends and my rights against other students who believe that everything I believe in and fight for is wrong. They call queer students the F slur and they make students who aren't like them public pariahs. Policies like this one are what encourage the creation of, of a uniformed society and get rid of anyone that is quote-unquote different. I forever never want to live in a society where everyone is exactly like me. Please do not comply with a harmful and useless executive order. Support the students you claim to fight for and protect my First Amendment rights. Thank you to all of the members who have raised concerns about students and have listened closely to us. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Madeline Sheets, then Nash Phillips.
Good evening. My name is Madeline Sheets and I'm a sophomore at First Colonial High School in the Legal Studies Academy. I was here at the last meeting to speak on DEI after the school board voted to ban it with no public comment. I've come here again to urge the school board to reinstate diversity, equity, and, and inclusion. I would also like to point out some of the claims made at the last school board meeting where people who supported DEI being pulled from schools, and I'm sure everyone who voted against this also agrees with this. That DEI is making it so your kids and by your kids, I mean white kids, are going to have a harder time because people who historically might have a harder time getting into schools, like ODS, different academies, or just feeling, or just finally feeling included in those places. But really, the people who say this are so racist to the point you are blind to it. are so racist to the point you are blind to it. And I feel I need to explain why you're racist, because you obviously don't recognize it. You sit here and you start seeing, seeing these things, being more fair, where your kid doesn't get a step ahead, the Mexican kid, the African-American kid, or the Colombian kid. You say it's unfair, and you get rid of it. The people who don't support DEI say that these kids and the things and opportunities they need to be successful is wrong, and it's giving them too much because your kid who doesn't struggle with those things, um, are suffering because of DEI. But you're really just upset that they aren't struggling as much, and they have opportunities in clubs where they can be themselves and be around people like them. You get rid of it, you make it seem unfair, but you really love when things are unfair. I would also like to point out, I think a speaker said at the last meeting, that there is no systemic racism anymore, and, um, just because something wasn't an issue for you doesn't mean it doesn't exist. Um, so I urge the School Bo- School Board to not listen to Trump despite your cult-like views on him. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Nash Phillips.
Let's not get it twisted. This DEI policy is now the sole doing of the VBCPS School Board. The recent court decisions blocking Trump's executive order prevent funding removal for noncompliance. So, the six of you that sit before us on the wrong side of the vote now have to answer for this. So, and here's a question, and this isn't to have a gotcha moment or anything. Would the members of the board who voted to repeal DEI three weeks ago consider themselves anti-woke? I, I, I'd say that's a fair statement. Now, uh, critics of wokeness often call the movement over-righteous. In practice, uh, most people's biggest issue with the idea is that they feel that they now have to tiptoe around their words. Interestingly enough, when I look at the bulk of the program set to be cut or clubs that will cease to exist, the problem exists not in the actual substance of them, but in how they are portrayed, or even specific words used to describe them. Let's look at some of the redlined sections of the 5.4 Educational Equity Plan, especially specific wording the School Board now wants us to tiptoe around for fear of being too woke. Section B.2 says, "The School Board will to be intentional in its efforts to replace factors that may lead to inequities, including racism, discrimination, harassment, and prejudice, with attitudes and behaviors that reflect acceptance, belonging, compassion, integrity, understanding, fairness, cooperation, and respect." That says, in essence, let's tr- make sure that our students are treated in a humane manner. How can you sit here and be anti-woke and now try to cancel the ideas of acceptance, belonging, and compassion? This is kindergarten stuff. You all should be able to proudly enter our schools and be role models, and yet, a five-year-old has more morality than you. Section 1F says, "Curriculum and instructional material for all grades shall reflect diversity and include a range of perspectives and experiences, particularly those of historically underrepresented groups." In layman's terms, let's teach history the way it happened. This is not North Korea. The 11 of you have the power to better our school system, not decide which pieces of history did and did not happen. And hold on, I also see that the six of you who voted for this policy don't exactly represent a diverse set of backgrounds. My late great basketball coach, Mario Mullen, would take a group of my teammates to the African-American male summit each year. They always spoke to how empowered they felt, and Coach Mullen was so proud to see great young men graduate each year. I am personally obligated to speak because I know how much this would have meant to him. In an email exchange with Mr. Culpepper a couple of weeks ago, he said that I mentioned nothing of significance related to any program or policy to help schools improve in my last speech a couple of weeks ago. The reason I didn't is because the answer is so abundantly clear: halt this policy. He also told me two weeks ago that I attribute my success to my privilege, and this misunderstanding is really the crux of the issue. Just because he lacks the maturity and self-security in his own achievements to make note of his own privilege does not mean he should confuse acknowledgement with attribution. Thank you.
Our next speakers are Benita Richardson, Kenneth Sutton, and Richard Pickens.
Good evening, School Board members and community members. Um, originally, the reason given for the rush to vote for the adoption for the resolution on April 8th was the result of what is currently, what we currently have legal guidance as unconstitutionally vague, a violation under the Fifth Amendment, and causing potential injury to the First Amendment. The judge did state that she was not sure in her injunction, this is a judge of the District Court of Washington, DC, um, if it would push the Virginia Beach City Schools to reverse the resolution. The court found that the federal, uh, certification, as I said, and as was said, was unconstitutionally vague under the Fifth Amendment. It failed to provide the guidance that, and would, um, trigger enforcement or penalties instead of placing the schools in legal justice for engaging in broadly undefined programs. As a result, not just our school system, but many felt compelled to preemptively cancel programs such as those outlined in the Equity Plan of Virginia Beach out of fear of federal consequences, despite the lack of clarity in the law. Yes, the judge does explicitly cite our, the Virginia Beach City School System Resolution as an example of institutions that were pressured or who moved because of being pressured with swift cancellations of lawful, in many cases constitutionally protected, educational offerings. The courts warned that this chilling effect leads to the unnecessary suppression of protected speech and learning opportunities. The mention of Virginia Beach City Public Schools reinforces that DEI efforts are not a political agenda, but an educational imperative grounded in precedents and best practices across the Commonwealth. It is because of this that I asked that the, um, School Board would pause the April 8th resolution completely, and hopefully to reinstate DEIA policies, uh, that would align with the constitutional status, standards. It also reaffirms my commitment, our commitment, to serving our community, every, and every student in fairness, dignity, and opportunity. I am Benita. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Kenneth Sutton, then Richard Pickens, then Cody Connor.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Board members. I don't have my glasses. My name is Ken Sutton. I have addressed you before. I'm a Vietnam veteran, retired school teacher, physics and chemistry. Um, I'm a Virginia Beach resident, Kempsville, District 1, and we have listened to many past comments, too many past comments, both for and against. I am also, this is personal, I'm getting old. I don't have a lot of time to waste, and we're wasting time. Time is precious, and again, wasting time is a sin. You, we are wasting our time. Think I can go past that? We should be doing priority issues and concerns that need to be addressed. We have so many more things that our students need from us. Our teachers need guidance and money, okay? Ditch the DEI restrictions and get back to providing resources for educating our students and support for our teachers. And it gets a little bit vague, but Mr. Cummins, I got something for you. I'm retired. I volunteered to serve my company, my country, and I wasn't drafted. I have been sent all over the world. I volunteered. I've been separated from my family months. I understand that you love your family, but when you ask to serve, serve with no, I won't, I'm not going to use, I'll, I'll, I'll try to keep my, my language decent. But, but I understand you love your family, but don't say it up here that you'd rather be someplace else. That makes me think that your devotion to your duty here for us is lacking a little bit, okay? That's just from me to you. If you want to talk to me about it, you can. That's all I got tonight.
Our next speaker is Richard Pickens, Cody Connor, and then Sarah Clark.
Just a few thoughts, listening to people speak. I can't even imagine why an art class would have to be in question. What are you guys doing in that art class that has to be questioned? Do the art! And, uh, clubs, I don't know why clubs are in question either, and, and several things being said, when you talked about, um, maybe with Sharon, Ms. Sharon Felton, you talked about indoctrination of the Indian tribes. Do you realize the Indian tribes were the last group of people to let go of slavery? They were the last group of people to do it. So, they needed to be indoctrinated, there needed to be a change. I just read that the other day. I thought it was an interesting comment. I want to start off by saying, "Vote no to pause of DEI," um, and I have my reasons for that. Last week, when we finished speaking, it was a very racially charged room. When I was sitting here as pastor, I was picking up on that, just, and when, then when I left the room, uh, I was pursued down the hallway with a good friend. I'm at all the way, we had to call security to get the gentleman to leave us alone. Very disparaging comments. And, uh, then when we got in the parking lot, this gentleman was released by the security. He came and found us in the dark parking lot, taking his jacket off, was going to fight us, and I learned that I am still a white boy, which I am, I agree with that, uh, no problem with that, and it was called racial slur. So, it, it works both ways, but I don't think DEI is a racial thing unless you make it such. Now, I pulled up Educational Equity 5.4 in prepara- preparation for really studying what you guys were having, were up against, and it is something that the group that's called this meeting wants to leave in, and as I'm reading through it, you know, we're using the word vague. Uh, the word vague begins here. This is the most vague, 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 vague document you're ever going to read, but one thing's not vague, over 18 times, it really hyper-sensitive to racial, racial equity, uh, color, uh, your nationality, and, and to my thought is, that's why I want to get rid of DEI. Students come to your school, you teach students math, you do art, you do whatever, and you could save yourself a lot of time, and the superintendent, a lot of time, and then there's one thing in here about, if you don't think right, yes, it's equity policy, you have to go to special class to be reprogrammed, I'm going to say, because I think that's what it is. I hear people that go to these kind of classes. I think you could save yourself a lot of time by getting rid of DI, and I think we can find a better thing to put up on that wall, like the Declaration of Independence would be great to put up there. And, uh, I'm, I love my, my, everybody, there's nobody I don't love, and the gentleman who attacked us in the parking lot, if I ever discover who he is, I would love to have a conversation with you. But, uh, we need to talk these things out. I think it's a better night tonight. Thank you, guys, for everybody being, even though we're on different sides, which is what happens. You have different opinions, and we talk them out. And I'm grateful to say that from the last meeting, I'm going to have a nice lunch with the head of the NAACP, and we're going to go out and talk, and I'm a talker. I love to get together if possible and just talk about different ideas and love on people and care about people, and I know that you're feeling too. So, I'm not going to say anything more. Do not, do not pause.
And that is time. Our next speaker is Cody Connor, Sarah Clark, and then Victoria Manning.
And I, I just want to remind everyone, um, please do not call out while people are speaking or clap during speeches. You can do hands during speeches and, go ahead.
Executive orders aren't laws. Dear colleague letters aren't laws, and these misguided threats to remove funding based on a false, hyper-propagandized interpretation of diversity, equity, inclusion that many of you are overly eager to capitulate to are now subject to several legal injunctions. In short, because they're too vague and probably illegal. I've read Policy 5-4, and nothing in it provides or denies anyone anything based on their race. So, even if these were valid directives, there's no reason to suspend the policy or gut it like you intend to do unless you really do have a problem with a diverse, equitable, and inclusive society. I've heard a lot of people say they don't understand diversity, equity, and inclusion because they're colorblind. What they're blind to is the clearly visible inequities in our society. But it's okay if you say you can't see color. I can explain this to you in black and white. You see, in black America, the unemployment rate is higher and the average wage is lower than it is in white America regardless of your education level. The, uh, median net worth of a family in black America is less than one-sixth of the median net worth of a family in white America. In black America, you are more than twice as likely to live under the poverty level. You are more than twice as likely to die giving childbirth, more than three times as likely in some states like Virginia, and you are more than five times as likely to be imprisoned than you are in white America. For many, the American dream, a fair chance for everyone, is still just a dream. And while myself and others would awaken that dream, dream into reality, you would have us roll back over and pull the blankets over our eyes. But I will say you're right about one thing. DEI is not about being colorblind. DEI is about opening our eyes to the sometimes bright, sometimes dark, but always colorful truth that is America. DEI is about acknowledging where we can become better and about becoming better. This colorblind 1950s television perspective only helps you ignore problems that could be fixed, and that only hurts everybody. The American dream is not in black and white. America dreams in colors.
Our next speaker is Sarah Clark, Victoria Manning, and then Clark Murphy.
Good evening. My name is Sarah Clark, and I'm here tonight as an educator, parent, and community member who cares deeply about making sure that the children of our community understand the values our country was founded on, values that include liberty and justice for all. I'm concerned that the recent decision to remove DEI and significantly change the equity policy could undermine the inclusive approach to education that we've worked so hard to build. Let's be clear, this change is not simply about getting back to basics as many as claimed, have claimed. It's part of a broader national movement that traces back to a now halted executive order, one that claims to promote patriotic education, but in reality promotes a narrow, sanitized version of our nation's history, a version that leaves out critical voices and lived experiences. This board has chosen to move forward with changes rooted in that same rhetoric, and that decision carries real and harmful consequences for instruction in our schools. As a history teacher of more than two decades, I have to ask, what could these changes mean for how we teach our nation's past? What basics are we getting back to, and for whom? Are we returning to a time when textbooks erased entire communities and silenced essential parts of our past? We've been there before, and we know the harm it causes, not just to students' understanding of history, but to their sense of belonging and their identity in the classroom. Removing diversity, equity, and inclusion from our policies sends a dangerous message, not just to educators, but to students we serve. It risks undoing years of work to ensure all students can see themselves in the story of America. Eliminating equity from our policies suggests that these stories of resistance, resilience, and injustice are somehow optional or unnecessary. These stories belong in our classrooms, taught by educators who are trained in culturally responsive practices. Our students are more diverse than ever, and they deserve an education that reflects that. This is how we prepare students, not just to pass a test, but to live as informed, engaged citizens in a democracy. Ms. Brown, I'd hope to be able to share these concerns and hear your perspective, as you are my representative from District 10. I was disappointed when my emails went unanswered, and I believed you when you promised to listen to parents before making policy decisions, but now I'm not so sure. I urge you all to put a pause on these policy changes. Our students deserve nothing less. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Victoria Manning, Clark Murphy, and then Heather Saip.
Greetings, School Board members and Ms. Woodhouse. The School Board's rules state, "Robert's Rules of Order shall govern the School Board when the standing rules do not address a procedural matter." Robert's Rules, Section 45, governs the procedures for amending a previous vote, the action item on today's agenda, and that states that members can only change their votes during a time period in which no other business has taken place. Once the board takes up other business, such as another agenda item or meeting, votes cannot be changed. On the call for this meeting, item number five is to quote, "Vote on the motion to amend previous vote." So, it's calling for a change in how board members voted on the previous vote. The call does not say amend something previously adopted, which is a govern- which is governed by a different section of Robert's Rules. Therefore, it would be a violation of your own rules to permit a vote to quote, "amend previous vote" since other business has been discussed since April 8th. As referenced by Ms. Lynetti, the court case out of DC actually referenced the Virginia Beach School Board's resolution. The plaintiff tried to get the judge to stop the Virginia Beach School Board's resolution, but the judge said no and stated in her decision- and stated in her decision that quote, "an injunction from this court would not eliminate the resolution that the school board passed," end quote. There have been three separate and conflicting court decisions related to this topic, and a vast majority of the plaintiff's complaints were denied by the judges. The only rulings against the Education Department were related to the process by which their rules were enacted, not related to the substance. The rulings also did not negate the fact that school districts must enforce civil rights laws. The Education Department has indicated that they will still enforce these laws. And in fact, as Ms. Lynetti referenced earlier, they recently opened a Title VI investigation into a New York school district. Years ago, when I was a minority viewpoint on this board, three of us requested a special meeting to try to return children back to school during COVID. We also requested public speakers, but were told speakers were not allowed at a special meeting. When we began the meeting and a quorum was announced, the board immediately voted to adjourn and ended the meeting without our agenda being discussed. Board members, including Ms. Melnick, then left the meeting and we were completely shut down. Thank you, Ms. Brown and Ms. Weems, for your impartial leadership, allowing all voices to be heard, even with people whom you do not agree with. It's imperative that this school board enforce civil rights laws and follow your own procedural rules. Item number five is an improper motion. And Roberts Rules, Section thirty-nine, states that an improper motion is to be ruled null and void. And I agree with Mr. Sutton that we're wasting time. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Clark Murphy, Heather Sype, and then Carlos Taylor.
Good evening, Chair Brown, Vice Chair Williams, school board members, and Chief of Staff, Mrs. Woodhouse. My name is Clark Murphy. I'm here to ask you to take a step back, hit pause on the resolution you passed to rid our DEI programs. It's about students. It's about making sure every student in our school feels safe, seen, and supported. And it's also about following the law and doing the right, doing things the right way. I want to focus on two things. First, the federal guidance behind this resolution is now on very shaky legal ground. Second, the way you passed it didn't follow Virginia law or your own rules. That's a huge problem. Let's start with the legal side. As we've been talking about tonight, three federal courts stepped in and blocked the Department of Education's attempt to restrict DEI in schools. The judges said guidance was vague, confusing, and probably unconstitutional. One court even warned schools that schools might be cutting programs, not because they're illegal, but because they're scared. That's not how public education should work. The courts also said that the department likely went too far, maybe even violating teachers' First Amendment rights. And let's be honest, the way this all unfolded, it forced school divisions into a terrible position. Pick between supporting students' need to succeed or the federal funding that helps pay for it. That's not a real choice. And thanks to the courts, we don't have to make it. We can focus on what matters most, helping students learn. Now the process. You voted on this resolution on April eighth without giving us a chance to speak. That's not just frustrating. That's a violation of Virginia's open meeting laws, including the Freedom of Information Act. And it's a direct conflict with your own policy, bylaw one dash forty-seven, which outlines how we should be allowed to participate in your meetings. That's not a small thing. That's not a paperwork error. It shuts us out. And when you shut us out, you silence the voices you were elected to represent. I taught in this district. I've seen what happens when DEI works, when students with disabilities learn side by side with their peers. And every child gets what they need to succeed. I've seen confidence grow. I've seen respect and understand deepen. That's what this work is about. You have, you may have had the votes to pass it. But that doesn't mean you did right by our community. It means you rushed. And we all noticed. The courts hit pause. Now it's your turn. Slow down, let the legal process play out. And next time, invite us in before you make decisions that affect every family in our division. Our students deserve that. Our community deserves that.
And that is time.
Pause now.
Our next speaker is Heather Sype, Carlos Taylor, and then Dan Chang.
Good evening, Chairwoman Brown, Vice Chair Weems, members of the school board, and Mrs. Woodhouse. My name is Heather Sype, and I am president of the Virginia Beach Education Association. I am here this evening to urge you to pause and soon rescind the resolution passed on April eighth. The resolution was created with the intention to comply with legal obligations in exchange for receiving federal financial assistance in response to Executive Order one four one nine zero and the Dear Colleague Letter. The common theme of statements from those of you who supported the resolution were that there's no other choice, we're not in compliance, and we can't risk funding. On April twenty-four, three different judges in three different courts issued rulings against these acts. The District Courts for the District of Columbia and the District of Maryland ruled against the enforcement of the certification requirement. And a national stay was issued against enforcement of the Dear Colleague Letter citing it is in violation of the Administrative Procurement Act. The District Court for the District of New Hampshire issued a preliminary injunction against the Dear Colleague Letter, the certification requirement, the use of the FAQs or the NDEI portal in any school or college in which any NEA member is employed. The courts have determined that threatening the loss of federal funding violates the First Amendment as it targets free speech. The NEA used the actions of this school board in that case as well. Your actions have, in essence, been ruled out of order. Every member of the Virginia Beach Education Association is a member of the NEA. Therefore, this injunction directly impacts VBCPS. Given this, there needs to be a reinstatement of anything that has been halted or changed in response to the demands of the Dear Colleague Letter and the certification requirement. These rulings mean the school division is free to make decisions about curriculum and educational programming, including efforts to support a diverse student body, staff, and faculty. Your hands are not tied. The division is not out of compliance. Federal funding cannot be withheld. Failure to pause and soon rescind the resolution will be a clear statement that it is your free will intention to remove the words diversity, equity, and inclusion from VBCPS. Strip policy five four, educational equity, which was done based on assumptions and what Ms. Lynetti thinks could possibly maybe be an issue, even though no clear guidance was given. Dismantle the twenty twenty-five and twenty thirty strategic framework, eliminate the equity plan and dashboard, and to arbitrarily decide which programs you want to eliminate without cause. You need to pause and soon rescind.
Our next speaker is Carlos Taylor, Dan Chang, and then Marie Dattino.
Hey. I give honor to my Lord and Savior, Yeshua, and I patiently look forward to His imminent return. I live in the Tenth District, and all I care about is the truth. Please vote no to pause on DEI. In reference to DEI, is it true that reading and math scores decrease for all students? Is it true that DEI violates Title VI of the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-four? The answer to both of those questions is yes. DEI simply does not work and violates federal law. After my speech last week, when I dropped some history about the Democrat Party, some colleagues of mine told me about a lady that made some statements in reference to some of the points I made. I would like to briefly address her following statement, and I quote, "All those Democrats went from the Democrat Party to the Republican Party." Now, based on that statement, you would think that all those racist Democrats rushed into a phone booth, spun around real fast, and came out as Republicans. But is that actually true? The problem with that statement is that we know their names. The Civil Rights Act of sixty-four wasn't done in a vacuum. Malcolm X and Martin Luther King were there during that debate, and they met briefly. Now let me give you the receipts. Of the twenty-one racist Democrat senators that opposed the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-four, which DEI violates, just one of them changed their political affiliation from Democrat to Republican. That was Strom Thurmond. In the House, just one changed their affiliation from Democrat to Republican, and that was a dude by the name of Watson. Just two individuals. The rest of those racist Democrats, state Democrats, got reelected as Democrats and left office as Democrats. Now, the truth can sting, but it's also the best healer. One of the most profound statements in all of the sacred sixty-six is when Yeshua tells us that He is the truth. He doesn't tell us that He says, just says, true things. He tells us that He is the embodiment of the very thing itself. Here's a quote that I want you to think about. Came from Sir Winston Churchill of Great Britain, and I think it's fitting. "The truth is incontrovertible. Malice may attack it. Ignorance may deride it. But in the end, there it is."
Our next speaker is Dan Chang, then Marie Dattino, then Jeffrey Cobb.
Chair Brown, school board, and Mrs. Woodhouse. School Board Code of Ethics states, "Members will respect the decision of the majority, serve with integrity and fairness, be respectful without disparagement." Since its passage, board members opposing the resolution violated this code in an attempt to garner public support. They falsely described the effects of the resolution removing DEI, claiming it axes important protected programs. This is all untrue. These board members didn't tell the truth to trusting citizens and imputed the motivation of members supporting the resolution. For example, at last Saturday's Democratic Breakfast, Kim Melnick falsely informed attendees that the resolution would negatively impact special ed and dissolve academy programs. This is untrue. Last week, Elvita Green, interviewed on a podcast by Ms. Allen, made outrageous claims about the resolution in board colleagues. She said, "The resolution," and I quote, "unraveled fifteen years of work in the school division that would ensure our students are successful." But Ms. Green knows DEI did not provide student success, as evidenced by declining test scores. Green insulted board intellect by expressing her doubts that they even understand the difference between equality and equity. Green insulted board colleagues in therapy, saying, and I quote, "As we are sitting here now, some of my colleagues continue to use the bleeding red pen to erase anything that was equitable in VBCPS." She attacked redlining, the standard practice in organization, when reviewing policies, neglecting to mention the policies redlined when she was an administrator. Ms. Allen expressed concern that board members wanted to get rid of even acknowledging Black History Month and Dr. King. Green did not correct this misunderstanding. Instead, she piled on, saying she was at least, and I quote, "happy to see that the school division was still honoring Asian American Month, because they have not finished butchering policy five dash four. They would take care of all of that. All of that that would go away based on how that policy has been redlined." Green also states the resolution, and I quote, "impacts clubs in our schools, Hispanic clubs and others. All of that will come to an end." Ms. Green, they will not come to an end. They will be more inclusive. Green and Melnick cannot back up their false and cendary statements. They misinform the public, violating the Code of Ethics. Do not be fooled. Do not pause the resolution. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Marie Dattino, Jeffrey Cobb, and then Susan Saltizziak.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I want to express deep concern, not just over the call to pause the removal of DEI programs, but over the fact that we're even holding this emergency meeting to revisit a decision that has already been debated, voted on, and finalized. This board made a clear democratic decision, six to three, to remove DEI programs based on Executive Order one four one nine oh. Now, instead of moving forward and focusing on what our students and teachers need most, we are all here again, spending more time, energy, and taxpayer money, rehashing a settled matter. Let's be honest, the pause isn't about new information or a urgent necessity. It's about relitigating a vote some people didn't like. Meanwhile, our schools still face real issues. Learning loss, staffing shortage, discipline challenges, and budget pressures. We could be working on any of those tonight. Instead, we're here because a few members want to delay what was already decided. My great-granddaughter attends school in Virginia Beach. She started in September twenty twenty-four. On October sixth, I was visiting her. She drew a picture of her family. Excited, she showed it to me. She drew her brother, her sister, her mom, and herself. I asked, "Where is daddy, sweetheart?" She said, "Daddy's a dirty word, and I can't say it." I said, "Your daddy is standing right behind you, baby." She replied, "No, Gigi, he's gone, he's never coming back." Five years old. Needless to say, I am very concerned about pausing or even taking a chance of making this permanent. Where is the reading, writing, and arithmetic? Every emergency meeting like this takes time away from classrooms, planning, and real progress. It sends a message to staff and parents that decisions don't matter unless everyone agrees, which undermines the credibility of this board. We hear proponents of DEI constantly speak of threats to our democracy. And here we are, at the behest of a minority, when the majority has already ruled. This is a threat to our democracy. We owe it to our students, our educators, and our taxpayers to respect the process, honor the vote, and use our time wisely. Let's stop spinning our reels and get back to work that truly matters. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jeffrey Cobb, then Susan Saltizziak, then Catherine Malley.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. I am Jeff Cobb, a retired Virginia Beach school teacher, thank God, and a proud member of VBEA, retired. I thank all of you for the opportunity to address this issue tonight. I speak with you this evening to express my concerns regarding the revisions in policy five dash four. I believe that it sends a very negative message towards, to people of differing backgrounds and concerns. The document, as now worded, or excuse me, as previously worded, was a product of several years' discussion and speaks to the essence of what we do to assist all of our children. The proposed changes, or the changes that did pass, use fewer words, but it does not express in specific terms the value and protection for those whom our society deems to be different. Section A, for example, purpose removes specific language about historical factors that have negatively affected people of color, the poor, those with different views on religion, and those with gender issues. The proposed document, or the current document, eliminates all specific language dealing with racism, understanding, and respect. It removes language that clearly defines the distinction between equity, barriers that interfere with the education for some, in effect, giving in effect, giving various peoples a different starting line, and equality, a word that has been transmitted into a bugaboo by many Republicans especially, to guarantee that all achieve the same results. This is a false narrative and one which the ongoing system of rewards and recognitions in our division and others show is a lie. Equity is simply about making sure that we all start at the same starting line. Section B is stricken in the new, or from the old policy. All language referring to identifying unequal or inequitable practices is removed. This change makes it open season on those deemed less desirable or more difficult to teach. The revisions having to do with championing of diversity have also been removed. In effect, the school board would attempt to erase teaching and recognition of contributions by members of other cultures. We have heard tired bromides about how this is racist towards whites, the group with most of the money and power in this country, which has elected a president, and too many others with racist tendencies. I would appreciate the school board's consideration in either at least delaying or perhaps reconsidering.
And that is time.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Suzanne Saltisiak, Catherine Mally, and then Abby Cosi.
Hello. My name is Suzanne Saltisiak, and I am a concerned parent, graduate, and resident of Virginia Beach District Five. I stand before you today to urge the board to pause the recent resolution to end diversity, equity, and inclusion initiatives within our schools. Ms. Williams, you said that you're confused about why we're here for a revote versus a pause. However, on April eighth, repeatedly, the board stated that you were moving quickly through this without public comment, without being on the information section or even on the agenda until twenty-four hours prior to the meeting. Also stating during that meeting was that due to the vagueness there, our superintendent and even our school board chair, Ms. Brown, were concerned about signing this certification. Now you have time to pause and actually have the discussion and implement it. If I choose to believe that those reasons were true last month, I wonder if you will hold yourself to the comments that you made back when the equity policy was mentioned and the resolution was passed in September twenty twenty. During that meetings, Ms. Williams, you expressed concern that the public had not been given enough opportunity for input, saying, I wish that the public would have had more insight, more collaboration, and more input during the process instead of afterwards. You also remarked, the process for developing this policy falls a little short of what the school board and community needs, the process. Ms. Williams even stated, I think equity is of extreme importance, and I believe the concept of this policy has merit. Contrastingly, the current move to dismantle diversity, equity, and inclusion efforts seem to lack the same level of deliberation and community engagement that you previously called for. Acting without comprehensive input on this vague order undermines the principles of transparency and inclusivity that you previously espoused. But now that's no longer a factor. The resolution was a reaction to an executive order that has since faced legal challenges, with court findings indicating that such directives may not withstand judicial scrutiny. Importantly, these legal developments suggest that maintaining our equity and diversity and inclusion programs right now does not place our school funding in jeopardy. Therefore, the previously stated rationale for dismantling these initiatives now lacks a solid foundation. Ms. Brown, you specifically cited concerns about school funding in your district. That concern is no longer supported by facts. You represent a district where a majority of residents are people of color. I know your constituents will be watching closely to see how you vote tonight. As you approach reelection next year, I also will be watching, seeing whether I will be using this to fundraise outreach in your district, highlighting today's decision. You ran on a promise to listen to parents, the way you felt you weren't listened to in the past. Will you now listen to and represent your community as pledged? I respectfully request that the board pauses the implementation of the resolution. By doing so, we can ensure that our decisions are informed, equitable, and in the best interests of all students in Virginia Beach. Thank you for your time.
Our next speaker is Catherine Mally, then Abby Cosi, then Janet Burns.
Good evening, Virginia Beach School Board members. My name is Catherine Mally. I am a retired teacher and current member of the V B E A Board. I am speaking on the topic of the recent D E I resolution that was passed by this school board quickly and without public comment. I disagree with the D E I resolution. I agree with the reasoning laid out by the Trump-appointed judge in the N double A C P case where Virginia Beach was mentioned twice. Quote, "The court finds that threatening penalties under those legal provisions without sufficiently defining the conduct that might trigger liability violates the Fifth Amendment's prohibition on vagueness." Although the challenged documents place a particular emphasis on certain D E I practices, they fail to provide an actionable definition of what constitutes D E I or a D E I practice, or delineate between a lawful D E I practice and an unlawful one." Unquote. Quote, "Because the plaintiff has established a likelihood that the certification requirement impinges on its members' liberty interest in receiving protected speech, it has shown irreparable harm." Unquote. From this, we should consider the following. One, the court has acknowledged that there is no clear definition of D E I. Two, in the absence of that clarity, your attempts to review and assess policies, strategic plans, clubs, or programs risk becoming arbitrary. Three, these arbitrary decisions may infringe on students and staff's First Amendment rights, particularly their right to receive protected speech and information. In cases like this, we should apply common sense and local pragmatism. If the foundation of a policy gets an injunction or stay due to constitutional concerns, then perhaps we should pause and let the courts clarify the legal landscape so we don't inadvertently suppress the rights of our students and staff. Virginia Beach School Board, please consider a pause on the D E I resolution. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Abby Cosi, then Janet Burns, then Suzanne Berman.
Good evening, Chair Brown, School Board, and Mrs. Woodhouse. My name is Abby Cosi, and I'm a lifelong resident of Virginia Beach. I live in Birchwood. I've worked for the Diocese of Richmond at the parish and diocese in Level, and I'm currently a youth ministers director, youth ministries director at a Catholic parish in Great Neck. I'm the executive director of Virginia Catholics for racial justice. And also to add, I'm a parishioner of the Basilica of Saint Mary of the Immaculate Conception in Norfolk, which is the only African-American basilica in the United States. My opinion is greatly influenced by these organizations. But today, I am not representing these organizations. My opinion is, as a Filipino-American, as a parent of past and current students of Virginia Beach Public Schools, whose faith compels me to speak, I am asking the school board to pause the sections on the April eighth resolution noted in tonight's agenda until the federal courts have ruled whether the Executive Order one four one nine oh can be enforced. In reading the agenda, the most disturbing phrase to me was, quote, "in exchange for federal financial assistance." End quote. As a person of color, a parent of a daughter with a learning disability, a special-needs son who has just been accepted into Project Search, and my daughter, Sophie, a seventh grader, being taught to be a global thinker at Plaza M Y P, if I were to make, if I were to have made the decision that you had to make, it would literally leave me with Sophie's choice. Choosing to eliminate, I would have to choose to eliminate programs which would allow Sophie and the majority of her circle of friends who are African-American to either, to eliminate those programs to flourish as human beings or choose to have her take one for the team so her brother, her friends, and other classmates who depend on the seventy-five million in federal funding for special education and free and reduced lunch to go without. This choice is meant to intentionally divide us. But it doesn't have to. You can do the right thing to protect and care for all our children by pausing your April eighth decision and allow the courts to do their job. D E I is not the name of a program. It's the larger vision that allows us, for every human being, every student, to flourish and share their gifts with the world. And lastly, my dad was the product of a D E I initiative. When he had to sign, when he enlisted in the Navy in nineteen sixty-five in Seubuk Bay, he had to sign a document that said he would never rise higher than a steward. In nineteen seventy-one, he was allowed to climb that ladder, and he retired as an E seven, as a computer programmer, and then a G S thirteen from the Joint Forces Staff College. And so I am a product of that, and it is whether or not you decide whether I am worthy of that, as well as my children. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Janet Burns, Suzanne Berman, and then Chris Just.
Good evening. My name is Janet Burns, and I'm a resident of District Four, and I am a concerned parent. I stand before you again here today, a day after my baby has had surgery, just because this topic is important to me. I ask you respectfully to pause the April eighth D E I resolution. Because of your swift action to remove D E I from our schools, many parents and students are now faced with great uncertainty regarding academic studies and extracurricular opportunities within the schools. As you may know, three federal judges stated that President Trump's administration attempts to dictate curriculum and punish noncompliant districts are unconstitutional. The executive order lacks clarity, and the language is, the language is vague. In addition, we still don't have answers regarding how Virginia Beach Public Schools are moving forward after approving the removal of the D E I policy. I spoke to Mr. Culpepper in the hallway at the last meeting, and he informed me that he received new information regarding what the speakers were saying. With that being said, everyone on this board has been presented with new information regarding the executive order. I ask that you reconsider your decision to, and pause the April eighth resolution. If you do not pause the decision to comply with the executive order, as a parent, I need to know what clubs and academic curriculums will be affected. With a child that's in the Global Studies Academy, whose curriculum is centered around diversity, equity, and inclusion, I need answers as to how the board is going to move forward with my child's academic studies. In addition, how will you ensure that children who have disabilities aren't going to be negatively infected, affected by the suspension to remove D E I? Again, I respectfully ask that you pause the April eighth resolution until the federal courts resolve the enforcement of an equal, I'm sorry, an equal equitable executive order. Again, I ask that you all, please just listen to what we're saying. The students have spoke. And I ask that you give our children an opportunity that you guys had, your children had, and/or your family members has had. Thank you for your consideration.
Our next speaker is Suzanne Berman, Chris Just, and then Linda Crisano.
Thank you. Before I begin, I'd like to express my condolences to Member Felton for the recent loss of your husband. I met Winford several times, and he was always so kind, and it was so clear how much he loved his family and how proud he was of the work that you're doing. My name is Suzanne Berman. I am a Virginia Beach-born-and-bred native. I have two kids in the public school system and one in preschool, and I live in District Nine. I'm here today to voice my support for Policy five four on diversity, equity, and inclusion. I don't expect to change anyone's views today, but I want to highlight what that policy means to me as a parent, as a P T A president, and as a voter. Policy five four states, the school board will replace racism, discrimination, harassment, and prejudice with acceptance, belonging, compassion, integrity, understanding, fairness, cooperation, and respect. These are values that I want for my children, values that foster positive learning environments for our whole community. The policy also states that strict equality of opportunity may not result in educational equity. There's a famous cartoon that explains the difference between equity and equality. It shows children of different heights trying to watch a baseball game over a fence. Equality is giving all of the kids the same-sized box to stand on. Equity gives them boxes that are appropriate for their heights. I stand before you at a proud four feet and eleven inches and three quarters. And I tell you that if you give myself and my husband, who's a six-foot-one Filipino-American, the same-sized box, we won't be able to watch the game together. And depending on our circumstances, we all have different boxes that we need to stand on at different times. My children are of mixed race, and I want them to be in a school system that celebrates that, to recognize that they have a heritage and a history that's important, both the European side and the Filipino one. I want them to learn about other histories as well and to ensure that it's the real history with all the messy details so they don't have to have some shocking reveal later in life when they realize how complex humanity can be. School boards around the country are in a difficult situation. They have been conflicting and confusing executive orders and other moves by the administration to influence what's taught in schools. However, legally, executive orders can't rewrite federal law or overturn Supreme Court precedices. I work in federal advocacy. I can tell you for sure, to the earlier question, executive orders are not law. Congress alone, by definition, passes laws. They also are exclusively responsible for the budget, including the budget of the Department of Education. And withholding funding is called impoundment, which is also illegal. The school board has already voted to keep teacher pay the lowest rate in our region. How do you think teachers feel now, terrified that they will say the wrong thing? How can they answer questions or teach history about the details of Jim Crow laws or slavery? Why wouldn't they work for Norfolk, which has higher pay and hasn't put this hanging threat over their heads? I urge you to do all you can to preserve the content of the diversity, equality, and inclusion policies. If necessary, change the words, but please keep the intent.
And that is time. Our next speaker is Chris Just, Linda Crisano, and then Eddie C. Chris Just. Linda Crisano. Eddie C.
Good evening. My name is Eddie C., and I live in the Tenth District in Virginia Beach. My pronouns are he, him, his. I stand before you today to discuss the resolution supporting the elimination of diversity, equity, and inclusion in our schools. Recent court rulings have issued preliminary injunctions against the requirements set forth by former President Trump, by President Trump, which, which compel jurisdictions to abandon D E I to qualify for federal aid. These decisions underscore that the mandates behind this resolution may not only be unnecessary, but also legally questionable. Diversity, equity, and inclusion are integral to fostering a safe and supportive educational environment for all our students. They promise understanding. They promise respect. They promised opportunity. By rescinding this resolution, which I'm asking you to do tonight, and I think we heard earlier that Roberts Rules of Order does allow us to do that. Yes, there is a motion for that in the, in the, in Roberts Rules. We, we can align ourselves with the trajectory of recent court decisions, reaffirm our commitment to an inclusive educational system, and ensure our schools remain places where every student feels valued. One thing that was important to me as I listened to preliminary discussion of this this resolution was that the reason, justification for it was losing federal aid. You're not losing anything. The court decisions state that. So if you want to put a pause, you want to call this a pause tonight, that's fine. But we need to rescind this resolution. It's not necessary, and it's legally questionable. So you're setting yourself up for litigation that's not necessary and for expenses that you don't need to spend and that we, as a people, are against. We've had speakers from every district in this community, last week and this week. And this should prove to you that this is just not majority-minority district speaking, it's every district in this city. So I'm asking you to rescind the resolution, and if So I'm asking you to rescind the resolution, and if you can't do that, pause it. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Sally Daniel, then Ian Springer-Woods, and then Elizabeth Shore.
Phew. In April, this board was told that it had to turn its back on the progress we have made in the area of diversity, equity, and inclusion in order to earn federal funds, which we need to run this district. Well, it had to move quick. There was no time to think about it, and that sounds remarkably like a tactic of a shady salesperson. Act now, or that good deal will go away. Don't think, just do. And so you did. Later that month, you asked for public to give you comments, and after all, the Virginia Beach public cares about our schools. Well, you heard a lot. Then, some neighboring school boards stood up to the dictate. They rightfully examined their options and learned that executive orders are not law. Hmm. And laws support DEI. So here we are again. To be honest, some of you welcomed the DEI ban. You have fond remembrances of your time in school before that messy desegregation, before women's movement, before gay rights. Wasn't life just simpler then? As a product of that time, I can agree that it was simpler, but it was certainly not better. America does not need to reverse its strides towards treating people as if we all have inherent worth. The best America and the best Virginia Beach is when everyone is welcomed to participate fully in school and in life. Embrace the best of America by embracing all of our children and employees. Don't just pause, rescind your vote. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Ian Springer-Woods, Elizabeth Shore, and then Bill Devens.
All right. Imagine that there is a board of mechanics, and this board of mechanics gets taken over by a certain gentleman who doesn't know anything about mechanics at all, but decides that he sees an inequality in what's going on with the board of mechanics. He says, "There's these cars that need, this car needs special tools and special parts, and this car over here needs special tools and special parts. That's not fair. We're going to make a policy that covers all the cars equally. So we're going to make a policy that says you cannot use any tools or parts except those that can be used on a 2012 Ford Fusion." And he just happened to own a 2012 Ford Fusion, but that's not really important, right? So he says, he makes this policy, and then, of course, people complain. They can't get to work. They can't get to school. They can't, they lose their job because their cars break down and they can't fix them. We would call that person an arrogant idiot. We would say, "What a jerk." Right? And yet, here we are, Policy 5-4, and there's a bunch of red lines on it. What's under the red lines? All the tools that are needed to make sure that our students get what they need individually to succeed on the road of life. And what's happened to them? Someone's gutted it. Some arrogant idiot came along and said, "We're not going to do any of this stuff. We're just going to have, you know, it says, parts for a 2012 Ford Fusion." You don't have to do this. This is stupid. It's just dumb. I'm going to say this every time I address the board. You should be listening to the current consensus of experts on the field when you make decisions. You're an educational institution. Now, who has the current consensus of experts in the field? Well, some of the organizations that have that are the ones that brought those three lawsuits, along with the American Psychological Association, the American Academy of Pediatrics, the International Association of Business Communication, the National Education Association, which one of the ones brought the lawsuits, and many, many more. And what all those organizations say? They say that their vast research completely supports diversity, equity, and inclusion being what makes them better, what makes them able to run, what makes companies better and more profitable, what makes organizations better and able to function better. You need to get rid of this rescinding. You need to pause it, and if you can, get rid of the whole banning in the first place. It's absurd. You can do the right thing. I know that some of you want to be that arrogant idiot that I just described, but I know that there's a couple people who voted to rescind DEI that actually were just afraid. You were scared. You don't have to be. We already went through it, so now you're not actually going to lose your money. You'll be okay.
Our next speaker is Elizabeth Shore, Bill Devens, and then Jean Fitchew.
Okay, good evening. My name is Elizabeth Shore. I'm a former VB schools teacher and parent. I'm also a citizen of District Six. So, Mr. Callen, I'm in your district, and I represent five voters in my household. And I had comments, and this happened last time, and I just make notes all over them, so forgive me if it's a little disjointed, but I just want to get some points. I'm going to start with what I thought I would end with, just so I can make sure this is heard. I ask the board to act quickly and with integrity to rescind, or in the least, pause the DEI resolution passed on April 8th. So, I'm going to just make a few observations. At the last meeting on April 22nd, Board Member Melinda Rogers had the foresight to ask our school board counsel, Ms. Lanetti, about any pending litigation that may impact the April 8th resolution. Ms. Lanetti responded, "I am aware that the NAACP has filed at least one lawsuit. Right now, I have not seen others at the K-12 level, except which appears to be the NAACP lawsuit that was just filed yesterday." Now, of course, in fact, at that time of the April 22nd meeting, there were three active lawsuits, which we just saw a comprehensive presentation. I believe the majority on this board and our council have both the responsibility and the duty to be as informed and prepared as possible, both prior to and after unilaterally passing a contentious resolution in the middle of a school year. Frankly, Ms. Lanetti, I am a little concerned that as our council, you seem unwilling or almost reluctant to admit that we are in compliance with Title VI. Ms. Woodhouse, during the April 22nd meeting, gave a presentation in which she reinforced adamantly that the school was in full compliance with all Title VI. So I appreciate that. We were in compliance. So, another observation, and Heather Sipe from the VBEA and others have made this point, was regarding that April 8th meeting. I was here, please go back and watch it. At that board meeting, the majority was pushing the urgency, the urgency of compliance, not the merits of DEI. You rushed the vote because you said you were afraid of losing funds. We are not currently in jeopardy of losing funds. There is no urgency. Please stop gaslighting the school community about the vote in this resolution. I ask the board to act quickly and with integrity to rescind.
And that is time.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Bill Devens, then Jean Fitchew, then Dr. Rick Klobuchar.
Good evening. My name is Bill Devens. First off, I want to thank, again, those responsible board members who voted to eliminate DEI indoctrination and actions from the Virginia Beach school system. I respect you all for standing up to the hateful intimidation borne upon you by many in this room. Please vote no on pausing the resolution approved on April 8th. Second, regardless of whether the president's executive order is judged valid, and regardless of funding impacts, this board needs to stay the course on its earlier decision and eliminate DEI within the Virginia Beach school system. Third point, discrimination or reverse discrimination based upon color, sex, or sexual proclivity is ugly and unwarranted. DEI only creates intense divisiveness between those it labels victims and those it labels oppressors. As already demonstrated in this meeting room, DEI has fostered hatred, anger, and vehemence. Continuing DEI indoctrination and actions within the Virginia Beach school system will only escalate this divisiveness. This board needs to put a lid on it. Fourth point, don't ever swallow the argument that DEI is just about raising up a particular set of people based on color, sex, or sexual proclivity. There is another side of the story. According to the Cambridge Dictionary, discrimination is defined as treating a person or a particular group of people differently, especially in a worse way from the way in which you treat other people because of their race, gender, sexuality, et cetera. DEI, or any discriminative program based on color, sex, or sexual proclivity, is a zero-sum game. There are only a limited set of resources, opportunities, and funds available. They just don't grow on trees just because DEI is instituted. Because of this, DEI comes down to giving preferential treatment to one group at the expense of the excluded group, all based upon color, sex, or sexual proclivity. Promotions, selections, and advancements need to be based solely on merit, meeting standards, and personal characteristics suited to the position at hand. There is no room for discrimination based upon color, race, or sexual proclivity. DEI, or any of its reincarnations or guises, needs to stop. Again, do not pause implementation of the DEI resolution. In conclusion, just as Andrew Jackson commanded his forces during the Battle of New Orleans, hold the wall. Where for you? May God bless you all.
Our next speaker is Jean Fitchew, then Dr. Rick Klobuchar, and then Gilbert Bland.
DEI is progress according to identity, not merit. It presumes the individual is deficient, unable to achieve, apart from this special classification, which diminishes expectations. This crushing devaluation ruins initiative and silently stalks the resilience of a curious and fruitful mind. Alternately, it adheres to the other lies and acronyms, which the student can simply self-identify as a status they cannot attain. LeBron James is not amused when you show up at the Forum and tell him you are now going to play point guard. His own son can't do it. I'm sure no one else can. So where are we? We are finally rid of this race-based menace which destroys forward progress. Achievement, fulfillment, transformative genius, creativity, and excellence. Never tell a child they are just like somebody else, especially based on a trait as inoperable as color. No child is the same as any other child. No child has the same destiny as any other child. No child can achieve what any other child can achieve. Each child is exceptional. Each child is unique. Each child is a constellation of abilities, a universe of potential, and the material of greatness. Ask Helen Keller. Ask Booker T. Washington. Ask Thomas Edison. Thomas Edison was taken out of school due to behavioral problems. Thank God they didn't have Ritalin. He was then taught by his mother, who instilled in him a profound love of reading. His teacher called him addled, disturbed, and said he didn't belong in school. However, Edison's mother believed in him and encouraged him, which led him to become the great inventor he was. He was deaf in one ear and the other affected by scarlet fever. He was symptomatic of ADHD. With 1093 U.S. patents in his name, Edison is the most prolific inventor in American history. If you love your child, get busy at home. If you have served this hemlock to your child or any other, pray to God for forgiveness and then tell your child, "With people, many things are impossible, but with God in this household, all things are possible, and we are going to see you do great things." Then tell them what Jesus said. "Let the little children come to me and do not hinder them, for the kingdom of heaven belongs to such as these." Then tell yourself, "Things that cause people to stumble are bound to happen, but woe to anyone through whom they happen. It would be better for you to be thrown into the Atlantic Ocean with an anvil around your neck than to cause one of these little ones to stumble." Start at home, then go to school. You are the child's teacher. School is a supplement. That precious person is ready and waiting for you to begin.
Our next speaker is Dr. Rick Klobuchar, then Gilbert Bland, then Georgia Allen.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Rick Klobuchar. I grew up in the inner city of Chicago at the height of the Cold War, when Sputnik flew over in 1957, and our entire educational system changed. We had duck and cover, so there was real imminent threat that you could have your butt get fried in a millisecond if a nuke went off. We had polio. We had remarkable discrimination in our schools. I understand what it is to have opportunity. And I went, I had my parents with a lot of support, and the schools. I ultimately got my PhD in nuclear chemistry. I say that because I'm not a professional educator. I'm a real professional scientist and engineer. So while I was at graduate school, and then also doing postdoc work at Brookhaven National Lab, co-discovering a couple of new isotopes on my dad, I also joined the Army as Corps of Engineer, and then did my reserve obligation. The reason why I say that is because Corps of Engineers, if you know anything about the Corps of Engineers, they do two things. They clear minefields, and they lay mines, and they build bridges. And I suggest that you, as members of the board here, you are in a minefield right now. You're in a minefield, and you've got a real need to build a bridge, because you've got two factions within our city here, those that want to see DEI stay, and those that think it's not a good idea and get rid of it. And so I urge you, at this point in time, to build that bridge. And with that, what I did is I had put together, as I mentioned the last time I was here, a petition. I just wanted to be able to read it, because I got then 70 signatures on it, and I could easily have gotten thousands on it, but it's an offer for a compromise. And the petition read, "We, the undersigned citizens of Virginia Beach, hereby petition the Virginia Beach Public School Board to suspend and ultimately terminate the DEI policy that is currently causing racial and gender disharmony in our schools. Our primary reason for that is that use of the term equity fundamentally embraces the notion of equal outcomes, which are not practically achievable, and fail to properly recognize the value of hard work and merit, especially in hiring of teachers and administrators, and in stimulating all of our students to excel. So rather than support DEI, we petition the school board to rewrite the policy to ensure equal opportunity for all, and to then go about, seek the proper funding for it, so that everybody can have this turned into a win-win situation." So I have plenty of sympathy, of respect for the people here who want to see DEI maintained. I can tell you right now, handicapping your students with that is not going to help them in the long term. Go try to get a...
And that is time.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Gilbert Bland, then Georgia Allen, then Sherri Sampson.
Good evening. I'm Gil Bland. I'm president and CEO of Urban League of Hampton Roads. I come before you as advocate for equity and a voice for many across Virginia Beach whose features depend on decisions made in this room. I'm also the father of three sons who have graduated from these high schools in Virginia Beach, and I will attempt to speak from experiences, not just theory, as also a leader in higher education and Commonwealth of Virginia. I've served on five college boards and was chairman of CHEV. For example, in recent experience in a partnership with the Virginia Department of Education, Secretary of Education, and Governor of Virginia, for the past two years, I've managed a tutoring grant for minority students in the urban core cities of Virginia. We use students from our four HBCUs as tutors. These students also doubled as mentors, because many of these students had never met a black college student in their neighborhood. Targeted outreach made a difference in the lives of those who were tutored. I will also tell you that in my board work, in each case, I've been a vocal advocate of DEI. It not only resulted in preparing a more inclusive workforce, but also the students across campus benefited from associating with more diverse student body and sharing varied thoughts and... varied thoughts and opinions from lived experiences. By the way, lived experiences, I know my fair treatment. I was born and suffered under the Jim Crow era. Three fellow judges have already halted efforts from the highest levels of government to eliminate DEI-related policies. Their injunction affirms what we already know to be true. Our Constitution, civil rights laws, and shared values do not allow us to turn our backs on equity. Now let's look at the Virginia Beach student profile. Today, most students in Virginia Beach City Public Schools are non-white, and under age five, 55% of students are non-white. Yet these students remain severely underrepresented, for example, in our gifted programs, the Math and Science Academy, the International Baccalaureate Program. It's not a coincidence. For example, my son graduated from the IB program a few years ago. He was the only black boy in this class in the largest city in the state of Virginia. He was the only black boy. These programs were initiatives designed to dismantle such discrepancies. Removing DEI from your vision will not dissolve disparities, it will only deepen them. DEI does not mean favoritism, it means fairness. It means helping all students reach their full potential by recognizing and addressing barriers that hold some of them back. So to you, board, I ask you not to stand with partisan politics, rather I ask you to stand with your students. Pause your decision. Let Virginia Beach be a model of inclusion, not exclusion. Let this city show the rest of the Commonwealth that we do not retreat from progress, we lead it. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Georgia Allen, Sherri Sampson, and then Natalie Bray.
Good evening. To the school board members, Chairperson Brown, Chair, Vice Chair Williams, and Mrs. Woodhouse. Okay, alrighty. When I came here tonight, I had a prepared speech, and I've listened to the preacher. My father was a pastor, never taught me any of that stuff. I'm sorry, but he didn't. He taught me how to love one another, so that's confusing to me. I've listened to people use words like indoctrination and radical. I also find that very disturbing, because growing up here in the city of Virginia Beach, for segregation existed when I was a child, I heard all the lies told to me about black people. I heard all the lies told to me about Africa, but they didn't tell me the truth, that they were stealing the diamonds and the emeralds and all the jewels from Africa. They didn't tell me that in school. They didn't teach me that in school. And then when I heard the guy had the audacity to tell me how I run my radio show, I found it very offensive. So I sat here for a moment, and I looked at this thing that says indoctrination and radical. Baby, I was indoctrinated in radicalized all my whole life here in the city of Virginia Beach. You lied to me, you indoctrinated me, telling me that white people are the greatest thing, and that the books are better in the white schools, and the white schools are better than the black schools, when our teachers had to work far harder and work with us to make sure every last one of us graduated, not because they moved us through, but because they loved us enough to continue to work with us, to make sure we achieved and overachieved. So yes, you need to pause. You need to pause this April 8th vote about the DEI resolution. You need to pause it, because you guys have been liars all my life, and you continue to lie today. You talk about merit. We overachieve again and again and again, and you bring your little raggedy people up here and tell them that they should be here when they should be underneath my feet. You made me angry tonight. I have sat here in this state, in this city, for decades and decades and decades, all the way back to the 1950s, and you guys are liars. DEI is in the best interest of all the children, including your little white children.
Our next speaker is Sherri Sampson, Natalie Bray, then Catherine Shinofer.
Point of order. The woman that just spoke is calling out things to us.
Sorry, hang on.
The woman that just spoke is calling out rude things to us as she's passing by.
Okay. All right. So, order in the room, please, yes, try not to make comments at other people, and I don't know what went on, because I couldn't hear it or see it, but if we could just get order in the room, that would be great. Thank you. Okay, so my name is Sherri, and I've been here since, in Hampton Road, since 2015, and I am opposed to pausing the DEI policies. The reason being is because I can tell you, I grew up, my mother had an eighth-grade education. I grew up with no chance of going to college, but I had a dream to be a doctor. And so, how'd I do it? I joined the military. In the military, I learned when your commander gives you an order, you don't have a choice not to follow it unless it's illegal, unethical, and immoral. These judges that have made their statements in these three states, this is not a concluded issue. There's been no formal decisions, and until a formal decision is rendered, and it's been through the appeal process, I don't think it is upon us to say we are not going to follow those executive orders which have the force of law. Now, getting back to my education, I became a doctor of chiropractic. I came here, I went to Regent University, I got a bachelor's in paralegal studies, and I got a master's degree in law, okay? No one paid for that, I worked for it, and so can every other person who is having challenges, getting their education, getting their lifestyle right, getting their situation right. Every person can do this in this country. We have freedom, and there is a difference between freedom and liberty, and most people don't know the difference. The difference is, we have the freedom to choose our religion. We have the freedom to choose our sexual orientation. What we do not have the freedom, liberty, is to not, let me back up, sorry, a little frustrated. There's a difference between freedom and liberty. Freedom means we can live and achieve our dreams. Liberty is related to a biblical standard of ethical, following ethical and moral laws, okay? Many of us in this room believe that DEI is unethical because, who does it discriminate against? The white conservative. That's who DEI discriminates against, against me. I had many challenges trying to get my education and get my rank in the military because of affirmative action and other policies of that sort. Okay, so that's really all I wanted to say. I wanted to say a Texas term that says, don't touch her-
And that is time?
...nose off despite your face.
That is time. Our next speaker is Natalie Bray, Catherine Shinofer, and then Joe Johnson.
Good evening, Chair Brown, Vice Chair Williams, and school board members, and Ms. Woodhouse. My name is Natalie Bray. I live in District Eight, and I have students who have attended Kingston Elementary, Old donation, and one who will attend Ocean Lakes High School next year. Thank you for the opportunity to voice my concerns about DEI in our schools. I'd like to highlight some alarming points from the Dear Colleague letter. This document brought to my attention some very serious accusations against public schools. The letter states that our schools have, quote, "discriminated against students on the basis of race, including white and Asian students. Our schools are said to have, quote, 'toxically indoctrinated students' and have frequently preference certain racial groups.' It says that schools are using crude, quote, 'crude racial stereotypes.'" Is this what's been happening for the last five years in VBCPS? Has there been widespread discrimination against white children in our schools? If this is the case, I'm shocked that you don't already have a stack of lawsuits on your desk from my neighbors in the Kingston Elementary School District, which is 73% white, or the ODS Elementary School Community, which is 57% white, schools ranked by the U.S. News World Report as number one and number two respectively in Virginia. Have you been discriminating against my white, upper-middle-class, high-achieving students? I suspect you're about to hear from a lot of parents who would like to sue this school system because you are admitted discrimination against their white students, because your response to the threats lobbed at you through the executive order and the letter from the DOE was to admit that you have been discriminating, and you promised to stop. I'm not a lawyer, but it doesn't seem like a good idea to openly admit that you're complicit in an illegal activity like discrimination. So real talk here, I know the principals, administration, classroom teachers, coaches, and special resource teachers at my kids' schools, and I think these accusations are false and defamatory. Listen, if you weren't engaging in discrimination, then all you needed to do was to affirm that VBCPS was following all existing legal requirements, and that you will continue to do so. Unfortunately, your response wasn't to deny the accuracy of the federal government's outrageous claims. Instead, you rolled over, belly up, and exposed our school community to possible ruin. Just because somebody tries to extort you using unconstitutionally vague threats, it doesn't mean you should cooperate. My third grader knows how this plays out. The class bully wants to take your new favorite pencil, but says they'll leave you alone in exchange for your lunch money. If you give them the money, they will be back for more tomorrow. Members of the school board, please stand up to the bully.
Our next speaker is Catherine Shinofer, Joe Johnson, and then Dr. Eric Majet.
Good evening. I'm here this evening to request that you refrain from overturning your previous vote to remove the racist and discriminatory DEI policies that are a direct violation of the Fourteenth Amendment of the United States Constitution and the Civil Rights Act. At the previous meeting, it became clear that everyone in the room had wildly different understandings of what DEI was, and that misunderstanding was subsequently reinforced by Democrat leadership as a tactic to trick citizens into supporting DEI. At that same meeting, we were also presented with examples of the deeply damaging and discriminatory curriculum that our children have been taught as a result of these racist and Marxist policies. They all gave beautifully written speeches demonstrating the indoctrination they have been subjected to, teaching them that they are all either incapable victims or cruel abusers, which could result in irreparable harm. It was instilled in them the racism of low expectations of minorities, who we now believe are incapable of, who they now believe are incapable of functioning at the same level as non-minorities without government intervention. They also view all non-minorities as abusers by virtue of their skin color. We have also now seen the discriminatory practices being foisted on our teachers through their required training courses, as you can see by the video online. Since then, we've witnessed the Democrats parading all over town, lying to citizens about what programs will be lost due to the removal of the discriminatory DEI policy. According to the Democrats, we'll lose special education, IEPs, the IB program, foreign language classes, academies, baseball. It's ridiculous. Everyone on this board knows full well that is not true. DEI is not just little help for poor children, and it is not every program you like in schools, as we have seen its codified racism. What they failed to mention was that if we keep the discriminatory DEI policies, then we still risk losing critical federal funding for our children. We all know that the upcoming elections in November are critical for the future of Virginia. The Democrats are trying to pretend that President's executive order to remove discriminatory practices from all entities receiving federal funding, or they'll lose federal funding, is designed to purposely cut school funding. They clearly intend to blame the President and Republicans for loss of school funding that they themselves have been fighting hard to lose, as we have seen here, in order to use it as leverage in the election. It's disgusting to use children's lives as cheap political leverage.
Our next speaker is Joe Johnson, Dr. Eric Majet, and then Melissa Luczen.
It's been a real long night. How's everyone doing? My name is Joe Johnson. I am a graduate of VPCPS. Hooray. Come to you guys to speak about a lot of stuff, but because of all the racism bigotry that's been heard tonight, I'm going to change it up. So I'm going to talk about what I spoke last night, and by the way, I checked, Jen Kagan still funded us this money seven months ago. That's in the past, you can't change that. So this money that we're all arguing about, it's already been funded for. It's still there. I want to point out something that a member said earlier, I think it was, his name was Bill Devon, said discrimination is wrong. He's right. Today, the Supreme Court allowed the President to discriminate against transgendered people in the armed services. Discrimination is still alive and well in our country, unfortunately. Something else I want to point out, two weeks ago, I had the honor of speaking here today, and I heard something very disturbing from a pastor, a pastor who, he and I share the same faith. We are both Christians, and so this is very disturbing to hear from him. He said, and had the audacity to say, that having students skip the line and speak in front of all of us, students who cannot vote, students who have to be at a government building at 7:20 in the morning, or they are breaking the law, having them speak in front of us before everyone else was unequal. And he's a little bit right, but guess what? That's okay, because they don't have as many rights as everyone else. They can't vote yet, and because they have to be at a government building at 7:20, it's okay that they are not last in line and speak to the very last of us. That is okay. Something else said last night, excuse me, two weeks ago, Chair Brown, at the end of it, you said, "People want to know where I stand on this. I stand with funding for our kids." Guess what? The funding's still there. Whatever. Let's see what else we got here. Oh, one more thing. I'm also a lifeguard, and in these very difficult scenarios, when you're saving someone's life at the oceanfront, you'll be in a situation where there'll be a victim in front of you, and then 100 feet out there be someone who's doing worse, someone who might be submerged under the water. So as a lifeguard, you have to do something difficult. You have to triage them in the water. You have to go to the person who's doing the worst. I'm not treating all my victims equally in that scenario, and that is okay. These situations are complicated. Everyone is exceptional, that is true. Every student is exceptional, but there are deep barriers that we all live with that make us unequal, and I ask this board to look a little bit harder, look at the complex issues, and please pause this.
And that is time. Our next speaker is Dr. Eric Majet, Melissa Luczen, and then Sue Rollins.
Good evening, everybody. Good evening, school board members, superintendent. I want to clear the air first of all. I do not have a lunch meeting with this pastor.
You set it up with me.
No.
It's on my calendar.
I don't have a lunch meeting with you to discuss this, not to discuss this DEI stuff. So I want to make sure that's clear, all right? Make it real clear. I'm Dr. Eric Majet. I serve as president of Virginia Beach branch of the NAACP. I come before you tonight to speak in strong support of the motion to amend the April 8th, 2025 School Board Resolution, the pause enforcement of, to pause enforcement of Sections One, Three, Four, Five, and Six, as well as the second sentence of Section Two, until the federal courts have ruled on the enforceability of Executive Order Number 14190. Just take a moment and stop. You all really don't even know what direction to go, so please stop. The issue reaches far beyond legal technicalities. It's about the heart of the public education, the values we instill in our children. Diversity, equity, inclusion, accessibility, commonly known as DEIA, are not abstract concepts or political buzzwords. They are foundational to a thriving, fair, forward-looking school system. You don't continue to make- You don't continue to make decisions in the dark without the proper information. DEIA matters because it reflects the real world our students are growing up in. Classrooms that embrace diversity expose students to different perspectives, cultures of life experiences, making them more empathetic, more adaptable, and more prepared for global citizenship. Equity ensures that every student, regardless of background, zip code, or ability, has access to resources and support the need to succeed. Inclusion fosters a learning environment where all students feel respected, seen, and valued. Accessibility ensures no student is left behind because of physical, learning, or emotional barriers. These are not just ideals, they just, they have measurable benefits. Increased academic achievement for historically marginalized students, greater student engagement, and reduced disciplinary disparities, stronger teacher-student relationship, and improved school climate, better college and career readiness, and a increasingly diverse workforce. Removing DEIA initiative jeopardize these outcomes. It tells us our Black, Brown, immigrant, LGBTQ, plus disabled and economically disadvantaged students that they do not belong or don't matter. This is not only morally wrong, it is also educationally disastrous. Again, pause, take a moment to pause. Pausing the enforcement of April eighth resolution until the court has spoken is a wise, unlawful, and necessary step. It protects our students, our schools, our future. I respectfully urge the board to vote in favor of the amendment. Let us not lead with fear, but with the foresight.
And that is time.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Melissa Lucson, Sue Rollins, then Jill Blake.
Good evening. On April eighth, this board passed an irresponsible resolution to dismantle DEI programming in our schools based on an executive order and dear colleague letter from the Trump administration. Two weeks later, it was suspended by the courts because it appears to be unconstitutional extortion of K through twelve public schools across America. And yet, our MAGA majority couldn't kneel fast enough. The same people who scream "local control" at the mere mention of federal guidelines suddenly have no issue bowing to big government as long as their person is in charge. Hypocrisy party of six, your table is ready. The only thing more fragile than your ideology is your understanding of the Constitution. Now, tonight, there's an opportunity, just a pause, to stop enforcement of this resolution until the courts can do their job. That's it. A chance to not jump off the cliff until we know what's at the bottom. But instead, this board seems determined to start dismantling DEI programs immediately. Here's the catch, they can't actually tell us what DEI is. Why? Because they don't know. Because there was never, this was never about programs. It's about politics. For a group that claims to hate identity politics, you sure do wake up every day thirsty for a taste of bigotry. You're not dismantling DEI, you're dismantling your own credibility, one vote at a time. You, Ms. Brown. You cannot define DEI, but you sure are hell-bent on destroying it. You conflate equity with oppression and inclusion with erasure. You call it indoctrination because you're afraid of education. Again, DEI isn't making your job harder, your refusal to understand it is. And speaking of willful ignorance, I must have really hit a nerve last week, considering Ms. Dwyer stormed out mid-speech, also Ms. Weems. Um, but Ms. Dwyer stormed out to report me to the police for hate speech. That's rich, coming from self-appointed defenders of the First Amendment. You'll champion freedom of speech until someone uses it to tell the truth about you and your colleagues. And if you think that was hate speech, you're in for a rough three and a half years. Buckle up, buttercups, because I will be here at every opportunity, holding up a mirror, verbally dragging you and your hypocrisy into the light. You say this is about protecting kids, which ones? Because pulling DEI doesn't protect Black kids, or queer kids, or disabled kids, or kids learning English. You're not protecting students, you're protecting the comfort of adults who feel threatened by fairness. So here's the ask, just pause and wait. Let the courts decide. In fact, don't fear, let facts guide your decisions. And if you're so sure of the righteousness of your resolution, then what are you afraid of? If you can't define what you're destroying, you shouldn't be allowed to destroy it. And also, I'd like to just mention, it's very ironic that the former speaker, Mr. Dick Pickens here, complained about being chased out of the building when only a year and a half ago, he chased me out of the auditorium when we were still at the Annex Building, and your security had to intervene because he wasn't taking "no" for an answer, you know?
And that is time.
People, you don't take "no" for an answer.
That is time. Our next speaker is Sue Rollins, Jill Blake, and then Ellie Guttenberg. Sue Rollins. Jill Blake.
Hi, Jill Blake, school employee and resident of District Three. I'm going to assume for a moment that each of you had the best of intentions on April eighth. That you believed that there was a credible threat of the loss of a significant amount of money for Virginia Beach Public Schools. That you did not take advantage of an opportunity to weaponize your own personal political beliefs, that you instead did what you honestly believed to be best for the kids. But things have changed. The democratic system has worked. The checks that are part of our founding documents deployed just as they were intended to. And the result is a legal limbo. We were following the law before. Has the law changed? We don't know. If it has, how has it changed? We don't know, right? I urge you to take advantage of that legal limbo. Take the time to be deliberate and to be transparent in your deliberations. Take the time to determine whether or not Virginia Beach City Public Schools truly are making decisions, implementing programs, or teaching curriculum that singles out a particular race for good or bad. I've heard some creative stories and definitions, mostly from people who are not in the school system or even have children in the school system. Equity, in fact, is not the guarantee of equal outcomes, it's the guarantee of equal opportunities. Please take the time to provide the kind of leadership that provides guidance and builds trust, not sows chaos. Please take the time to show us that you are the kind of leaders who can learn.
Our next speaker is Ellie Guttenberg, then Pete Herbert Woodhead, then Darrell Clark. Ellie Guttenberg. Pete Herbert Woodhead.
Evening, everybody. Pete Woodhead, District Ten. Diversity, equity, inclusion, accessibility. I have two grandchildren in Virginia Beach schools. I graduated from high school in Henrico County in nineteen-seventy. By then, my high school was integrated. The student body was diversified. In spite of that, the educators at my high school were not. All of my teachers looked like me. Looking back, I realize that both the students of color and the white students were deprived of a superior education. We all could have, that we could have received if our teachers were also reflective of our community. We were robbed of equity. This lack of inclusion did not truly serve us or prepare us for our diverse world. The fact that now, more so than ever before, these things are very accessible is the very reason that I am so opposed to the actions that six members of this board have taken. You heard from the people, and you know the wishes of the vast majority are opposed to this resolution. A resolution that we never were given a choice over. This resolution was based on the fundamentally flawed and probably illegal Executive Order one-four-one-nine-oh, created by a deeply flawed man who only has one tool, extortion. He's a bully, and he uses this club in all of his actions. New Hampshire, Maryland, and DC are standing up to him. The courts in those cases found that there is consistent vagueness, not to mention infringing on students' First Amendment rights. Let's step back from the brink of disaster here, pause, and then rescind this resolution. Ms. Weems, not getting one's way can be very disappointing. That you've lived the past twenty years and only had this once is remarkable.
Our next speaker is Darrell Clark, then Michael Clarkslake, then Jessica Owens.
So, let's start with the fact that y'all snuck in this, the April eighth decision, really slimeball-like. That, to knowing that y'all did it that way, just goes to show that y'all know y'all were doing the wrong thing, right? Because if y'all weren't, then it would have been public, and then people would have had a say in, in it at all. But y'all chose not to. It says everything, and it also just goes to show that your allegiance to blatant fascism has never been more apparent. The fact that what these people have said today, like, it's not even the law, but y'all just went ahead and did it. Like I said, it's a, it's a pattern, it's a pattern, um, that, that the student, that the Students First of Virginia crew has initiated time and time again. I really wish that y'all changed that name too, because y'all absolutely do not put the students first. Because if y'all did, then, um, you know, students will be able to speak more than ten at a time in the beginning, instead of y'all removing that and making it so that they, they got staggered after ten students, instead of just letting them all speak, because they are the ones who are directly affected by all this. But, I don't know, that's neither here nor there. And also, who defines what racial indoctrination is? Who, who's saying that, that DEI is racial indoctrination? Because I guarantee it's someone who's never been in a minority category, or a marginalized category, or any of that, um, but y'all don't relate to that. And also, you know, DEI also affects disabled people. And that's one group that anybody can join at any second. One bad slip, a car accident, whatever, and you have to rely on DEI, so if any of your children happen to happen to get into an accident or whatever, then they're gonna rely on that, right? So if you try to get rid of that, then, I don't know, it's just, it's, uh, you're, you're, you're doing injustice to not just your community, but to your families. And if you want direction, listen to your students and listen to history, because history is also continuing. Like, people try to say that, you know, uh, systemic racism isn't, isn't real or doesn't exist, when I've lived through it. People before me have lived through it. Some have been, some have been killed by it, so, you know, uh, I think the only indoctrination that's being brought upon is, is what y'all want. And that, uh, is fascism, so, yeah.
And that is time. Our next speaker is Michael Carslake, and then Jessica Owens.
Good evening, school board, um, Mike Carslake, from Michigan. My first car was a snowmobile, and I'm not kidding. Tonight, I want to support the board's six-three vote on April eighth. I, uh, think if I've heard anything tonight and two weeks ago, it's a DEI. It's kind of unclear to most everybody in this room, because I've just heard Fifty Shades of Grey on DEI. All kinds. Do we understand it or not? One of the words I heard from the legal descriptions tonight that were read, um, by our attorney, is that there's a lot of vagueness going on. It is vague. I've been reading about it, and I'm still vague. But one of the things I've noticed is that it's a social program that is maybe not getting us where we want to go. We've quoted different things about disadvantaged students, kids that have been injured, this previous gentleman just mentioned, we're only a moment away from slipping and falling. That's part of the Americans for Disability Act. That's not DEI. You can be completely disabled, and you're gonna get every benefit the state of Virginia can give you and the federal government can give you with ADA. I believe. If not, you should get every benefit from that. I'm not in the schools, so I don't exactly know that, but you should be getting that from ADA. So I'm in, I'm in favor of what the six-three vote was. I'm a little unclear on the First Amendment to receive protected speech. Can we receive any protected speech? What kind of protected speech can you receive? Or is it about giving protected speech? Which, is it giving speech, speaking, as we are tonight? Or is receiving speech? If we're receiving speech, who are we receiving the speech from? Teachers, educators, mentors? Is that subjective speech or objective speech? Who's in charge of what they're speaking to you about? Does your second grader know what they're being taught? Or are they subjected to it? No, they're subjected because they're a second grader. They're gonna respect their teacher. But that doesn't mean their teacher's telling them what they should be telling them. And I'm not saying this to defame any teacher, I'm just saying that what is protected speech? As a Christian, I understand that my speech about Christ, as was highlighted by my buddy Gene Fitchy tonight, is not protected in the schools. Teacher cannot tell me about Jesus Christ, or anything else about Christianity, because that isn't their protective. They can't give you that protected speech, I'm out of time, but.
And that is time.
I'm in favor of the six-three.
Our next speaker is Jessica Owens.
Good evening, school board members and previous colleagues. Uh, Ms. Woodhouse, and my very favorite, Ms. Tony Otto. Uh, for those who don't know me, I'm Jessica Owens. I am a Virginia Beach Schools grad, parent of a grad, and previous school board member for Rose Hall District. Last meeting, I watched and participated virtually, and after all the comments, prior to going into closed session, Ms. Brown, you took the time, uh, to share some personal explanation about your motivations behind the actions and allowing for a vote to move forward outside of the expected norms of this board, and outside of the transparency and voice that this community is entitled to. And I listened. The community listened as well, as you explained, that you didn't take that decision lightly. And that you took the action needed to protect the schools in District Ten. And you considered the possible impacts that a funding loss could have on vulnerable Title I schools in your district. And Kathleen, I, I appreciate your concern about the constituents in your majority-minority district. And now that we know the funding to those schools is not at risk at this time, you have the opportunity to pause, to show your district that your actions match your words. I want to thank the board members who brought forward this meeting, providing the entire board the opportunity to pause, to provide the community with the transparency that we deserve. A resolution directing the superintendent and administration to rewrite or amend policies that none of you all feel comfortable in. that none of you all feel comfortable enough to explain because you don't yet have the clarity. That doesn't make sense. It's the opposite of transparent. A resolution with no idea on what will be impacted is not transparent. Last meeting, I told, I started my speech saying that I don't expect comments from the community to actually change the minds on the board. And I still feel that way. And my husband asked, well, why are you coming down to speak if you believe that? I wasn't really sure. I was reminded today, though, by a person who I admire, that even if nothing changes, showing up shows the individuals and the communities who are being impacted by these decisions that they are not alone. It highlights the safe people for them in their neighborhoods. And so I thank those who have come to speak and show who you are. Thank you.
So Madam Chair, that was our last in-person speaker. We're going to move on to our online speakers. Paula Chang, please unmute.
Okay, am I, can you hear me now?
Yes, please go ahead, Ms. Chang.
Okay, great. I was keeping it muted. Okay, I just want to just make a couple of quick comments. And one is to ask why this special meeting to suspend the resolution was called when there is a regular meeting scheduled next week? There's no emergency, as the judge's enjoyment was released 13 days ago. And six more days or seven more days is not going to change anything. I really believe when we look at this, it's political theater in this meeting wastes resources. Taxpayer funds, employee time, and citizen time. And I think that's really important to think about. If some, this money can be better spent in other ways and this time could be better spent in other ways that it helped the school system. I also have to ask why some of the members who want this resolution put on a pause or whatever, actually, they want it removed, is the real truth, I think. They actually have lied about the need for the emergency meeting, but also seem to lie about the resolution, claiming it will negatively impact services for those in some groups, for instance, with special needs. So why do they say that? Why are they so desperate to hang on to DEI that you add different groups, such as those with special needs, saying that they're going to be impacted when in reality, they're not going to be? The funds are there, the intention for that care is there. So they do this to try and make DEI relevant by including these people and even do such things as subversively changing the expression of DEI to DEIA when we all know that what they're saying is not true. We all know DEI has not helped the communities it's intended to. And if these things are true, I challenge Ms. Melnick, who this weekend listed some of the things that she said will be impacted, like special ed. And I think she said academies and other things somewhere that she spoke. I'm asking her to please back up what you say and provide evidence that those things are going to be removed and don't just try to scare people. And I'll listen. And one other concern that I had was Ms. Green, who recently appeared on a podcast, talked about the fact that clubs specifically created for different groups, such as Hispanics and LGBT ended. But I have seen no evidence of that to back up what she said. I suspect that likely these groups will remain but become inclusive, not continuing to exclude others. And I really believe this is better for society because the legality of teaching and encouraging the separations of students in our school system based on racial and ethnic classifications not interest in activities that are what goes on or should go on in school actually teaches societal division. And that's a harmful thing and another reason not to pause this resolution. So let's not change anything. Let's continue the process begun. And that's it. Thank you very much.
Okay, Madam Chair, Speaker 2 is not online, so we're going to go to Speaker 3, Ginny Pizarro. Please unmute.
Yes, hi. Can you hear me?
Yes, please continue.
Yes, yeah, my name is Ginny Pizarro. And I want to make a couple points. Thank you so much for everything you guys do for all the children and for everybody in Virginia Beach, all the teachers. My first expression is that DEI is not something that belongs in the schools. Everybody is protected by the Declaration of Independence. It doesn't matter what color you are, what race you are, what gender you are, whatever. It does not matter. You are protected by law. Okay, and that was written over 200 years ago. Bringing this up and teaching this in school to kids that don't even understand anything about what it is, they're not mature enough, their brains do not mature until 21 to 25. 21 for females, 25 for males. This should be something that is maybe for post-high school, 18 and above. So I truly hope that you guys will stay with your regular, the decision that you had already made previously. Do not change anything. The other thing I want to say is I think DEI is setting people up for failure in the juvenile justice system and in the jails. If you are biologically a male with those parts, you are going to go with the men. They don't care what part, what you identify as. If you go in the juvenile system, if you identify as a male and you're a female, it doesn't matter. You're going with the females. And sometimes those people get joked. And it's sad. It's really sad. And so I think DEI, being in the school system and encouraging kids to change their bodies or to do this and that, and oh, you're a boy, you're a girl, whatever. They're getting confused. The job of school is to teach reading, writing, and arithmetic. And you'd be surprised how many high schoolers don't know reading, writing, and arithmetic. They go off to college and all they do is Google their answers. And seriously, it's my taxpayers. It's my tax money. It's all the people I know's tax money. It's a public school. If it was private school, go right ahead, do what you want. My tax money's not going towards that. But my public tax dollars are going to fund Virginia Beach public schools. And so DEI does not belong in a classroom with any child until they're 18 and above. And that's all I have to say. So I hope you keep the course and follow Trump's, President Trump's executive order and do as he has commanded. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Vic Nichols. Please unmute.
Thank you. I agree with the School Board's decision. ADA does not equal DEI. If you would notice, it's not until just recently, in this past couple of meetings, that ADA was lumped in with all of the DEI being removed. ADA and DEI have always been different. ADA was long before DEI. It would be appreciated if people would stop using that because the only reason they're doing that is to try to use it to hook you all into changing your vote, and that should never happen. Thank you very much. Have a great evening.
Our next speaker is Jamie Perry. Please unmute.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, I'm sorry, can you hear me?
Yes, please continue.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can hear you. Please continue. Ms. Jamie, yes, we can hear you. Please continue. Okay, we'll move on to our next speaker, Amanda Yoder. Please unmute.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, is this Amanda?
No, that's the previous speaker.
Okay, Jamie, please continue. Jamie, you can continue. We can hear you.
I can't hear anything. Can you hear me?
Yes, Jamie, we can hear you. Jamie, we can hear you.
Madam Clerk.
Okay, we're going to move on to our next online speaker, Amanda Yoder. Please unmute.
Good evening, Board members. Can you hear me?
Yes, please continue.
Okay, good evening, Board members. My name is Amanda Yoder, and I come to you tonight not just as a concerned community member, as well as a school counselor, but also a combat veteran who has served this country in uniform. When I was deployed, I fought alongside soldiers of every race, religion, and background. We didn't just tolerate differences, we relied on them. Diversity is not our weakness, it was our greatest strength. And it is that same strength that I want to see reflected in our schools. I hear people use the acronym DEI and say it doesn't belong in schools, and I don't even think they know what it means. DEI is diversity, equity, and inclusion, and they are critical elements of our school community. I did not risk my life for a country that only makes room for some of its children to see themselves in our education. I fought for an America where every student, all races, can open a textbook and see themselves or walk into a new school and know they belong there. This is not hypothetical for me. When I worked for Virginia Beach, I helped build programs that made our district a national model for supporting military-connected students. That work, meeting the unique needs of students as they move between schools and rebuild communities, that was diversity, equity, and inclusion in action. And it worked. It still does. This isn't just about military families, though. Walk through our schools and you'll see. We also have a large population of Filipino students whose families have shaped this community for generations, yet they rarely see their history in our curriculum. Work to correct this and be more inclusive was in progress and has been halted by folks who are anti-DEI. You will also meet Black students like my nephew, whom my husband and I raised, who once asked me the heartbreaking, with heartbreaking honesty, why do we only learn about one kind of hero in school? That moment stays with me because it revealed a painful truth. When we exclude stories, we exclude children. They deserve to see themselves in our school, in our curriculum. So let me be clear. DEI, which is diversity, equity, and inclusion, should not be about politics. It should be about preparing all of our students for the real world, a world where respect, empathy, and opportunity are not privileges for some, but foundations for all. As someone who has worn the uniform, I think that this should not be about liberal or conservative values. It's about American values. I've served this country, and I'm asking all of you to serve our students. Suspend this resolution, and let's honor the America we claim to believe in and build the America that we want together. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jennifer Franklin. Please unmute.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, Ms. Franklin.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair Brown, members of the School Board, and Ms. Woodhouse. My name is Jennifer Franklin, and I'm here on behalf of the Hampton Rose Black Caucus and concerned community members. Tonight, I respectfully ask you to pause on or rescind the resolution to name, change the name and direction of the Office of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion. Thank you for calling this special meeting and demonstrating your willingness to hear the community, especially while a federal ruling remains unresolved, which could further affect this issue. For the past few years, I volunteered as a reading tutor for kindergarten and first grade students through the Life and Richman Center. At that age, most children still have light in their eyes and their self-esteem has not been impacted deeply by life circumstances yet. But yet, when they're already comparing themselves because some struggle with reading and grow frustrated when others seem to just get it more easily. But when you ask them about something they love, their spark returns, and that joy is precious, but it fades far too quickly. A client of mine, a pediatrician who has practiced across the country, thanks to her Navy SEAL husband, once gave me an analogy I've never forgotten. A child's ability to learn rests on four legs of a stool. Food, shelter, parents, and structure. If one leg is unsteady, learning becomes harder. Our students come to us from widely different starting lines. Their stools are not all balanced. Then you add in IEPs, 504s, and other needs, and you see just how diverse our student population truly is. That's why DEI programs matter. We cannot claim to offer equal opportunity while turning a blind eye to the unequal realities our students face. If we're willing to invest in students battling addiction or trauma and care about their continued focus on learning, then we must also invest in those navigating poverty, instability, or marginalization. Struggles with learning don't discriminate by circumstance, so why should our support? We are a public school system, and every child deserves to be seen. Every child deserves to be valued. We are so fortunate to have staff who go above and beyond. For many, it's not about the money, but because they believe in our kids. These children are future leaders, teachers, business owners, and yes, even future School Board members. For many, life has already handed them lemons. We must be the people who help them understand how to turn those lemons into lemonade. I recall being on the board during the pandemic and weighing whether to return to virtual learning after the COVID numbers started rising again. Our decision to pause and stay the course, keeping kids in school, proved right. And I urge you to pause now. Think long-term. Consider the legacy you'll leave. Politics, opinions, and pressure will always exist, but they should never outweigh our responsibility to students. Empowerment may not mean much to someone who's never struggled with those legs on their stool, but to a child who has, it means everything. It means hope. Sometimes one person's belief can change a child's life. Teachers do that every day. I hope this board, their leaders, will too. Thank you so much for your time and your service.
Our next speaker is Sandra Shonaburger. Please unmute.
Good evening. I hope you can hear me. Since no one, not one speaker out of well over 100 speakers over two weeks, offered any hard data showing provable, visible, tangible benefits of DEI, I looked at some tangible anecdotal data myself. I'm glad we have so many people speaking up. This way, we can further examine any actual losses or gains, if any, regarding DEI. Here's one example when DEI was not in place. On April 22nd, a spokesperson from the VBEA described a VBCPS teacher who taught for 22 years, including years that DEI was not in place. The teacher was described as "the epitome of inclusion." Other phrases used were that she opened her heart to all students and she was beautiful and selfless. My sincerest condolences to her family and friends. Again, that Latin teacher displayed the leadership that we all agree is best, and that occurred with no DEI in place. A hostile woman tonight said her teachers, quote, "loved them enough to work harder for them to graduate." That love was with no DEI in place, yet her hostile behavior is linked with DEI. Conversely, with DEI in place, in 2023, a noose was found at Newtown Elementary. In 2024, a pride poster was torn down at Kellum High School. Several students publicly voiced how hurtful that was for them. A third school saw racism on their baseball team to the extent that their entire season was canceled. These horrific incidents all occurred with DEI in place. Another speaker on April 22nd offered that studies did show a larger achievement gap with DEI and showed DEI to be counterproductive. Now, I just want to, I noticed that there is agreement and a general consensus in the room that no two speakers even understand DEI the same way. So how can any loss or gain be shown? It is a shame that some are using that as a smear campaign. I mean, very clever, but it's a shame that they have to do that instead of just finding ways to agree. Separately, let's see, it was confirmed on April 22nd that no school clubs would be changed or dismantled. And since emails came up earlier, I just want to mention that Ms. Melnick has never once responded to any of my emails in approximately seven years. And let's see, please vote no to continue the course. Or vote, vote to continue the course, vote no to pausing. Thank you so much, School Board members, for everything you're enduring. I want to maybe throw out a silly little comment. When life throws you lemons, just keep them because, hey, they're free lemons. Have a good night. Bye.
And Madam Chair, that was our last speaker for this evening.
Madam Clerk, I did use the text in our speaker log and reached out to Jamie, and she said she was going to log back in, so if we could give her one more try so she has the chance to speak. Thank you.
Okay, Jamie, go ahead.
Thank you so much for bearing with me here. I hope you guys can hear me.
Yes, go ahead. Yes, go ahead.
I am a citizen of District 8, and you've already heard strong support from students and parents and teachers in our communities to keep D E I in schools. I would love to see us join the many counties and states currently standing up to an administration that uses our children as pawns in a political and frankly extortionate game, threatening funding and stirring up culture wars, even while the legality of these actions is currently under question, as we've acknowledged. A little about myself, I grew up around the DC area in the 80s and 90s. So my childhood, if you've ever been in that area, especially during that time, it was rich in diversity and culture. I carry those experiences with me as a parent and as a person today. It colors the way I look at the world, the way I interact with people. It's crucial to a person's development. And so it saddens me to see that my son, a white male, might grow up being told that diversity is bad, that inclusion is woke, and equity is punishment. What kind of example are we setting for our children? They hear adults using D E I like a weapon, as if it's a new kind of slur used to attack successful people in marginalized groups. We are a community, I believe, that values education. We must then recognize that removing D E I along with critical race theory and pushing so-called patriotic education is part of a larger effort to suppress honest conversation about racism and our country's past, how it shapes our present as well. So I'm asking you, please overturn, I know we're supposed to say pause, but I'm asking you to overturn the April 8th resolution. It was made without public opportunity for input, and what you're seeing now was the result of those actions. Thank you so much, and have a good night.
Okay, so Madam Chair, that was our last speaker for this evening. Thank you.
All right, with that, we are going to take a five-minute recess before we go into our motion here, and so we will return at 9:35. Now back from recess, and we are on to vote for a motion to amend previous vote. So I will accept a motion to amend previous vote, namely to amend the April 8th, 2025 School Board Resolution to comply with legal obligations in exchange for receiving federal financial assistance to pause the below-listed portions of the April 8th resolution until the federal courts have ruled whether Executive Order 14190 can be enforced. A, Resolution Sections 1, 3, 4, 5, and 6. B, Resolution Section 2, the second sentence regarding suspension of all educational program offerings that do not comply with the above federal guidance, including but not limited to the Equity Plan, the Equity Dashboard, and any educational program offerings that would not comply. Moved by Ms. Melnick, seconded by Mr. Cummings. Before I open the floor, I am gonna comment, because we did get a number of emails regarding Roberts' Rules of Order, and I did research those emails, and I do believe that the intention of the motion on the floor does comply. In my interpretation, there are some sections that, you know, get a little bit muddy, but when it comes to determining that something is out of order, for me, I have to be 100% sure. And so, since I am not, we will continue with the motion, and Dr. Green.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And so my question is for Ms. Lanetti. You must have ESP, because my question to Ms. Lanetti, Ms. Brown, is related to ensuring that the motion is in compliance and order with Roberts' Rules of Order.
The intent of the motion, you explained to me, was to amend it, not to rescind, not to redo the vote, was to amend what you had voted on, what you had previously voted. Any mistake in that would be mine, not yours.
Yes, so we are in compliance with Roberts' Rules of Order, because I don't want later to come, someone to come back and say, "We didn't follow this," or... So my question is, is it, or is it not?
I believe it's, the intent is written that way. Obviously, there's arguing, we've seen individuals indicate that the wording could have been different on there. I think when you read the motion as written, you're amending what you voted on last time. You're not asking to redo the vote, you're asking to amend the time of implementing what happened in that resolution.
All right, we understand that we're not amending the vote, we're asking a pause. So how do we need to word it, so that we are, okay? But I need to make sure we're clear that we're not trying to amend.
You're not trying to redo the vote, as was, you're trying to amend what you previously voted on, which is the time periods that those things were going to happen, and you're just asking to stop until a court comes out. So you're amending that because a new information has come out.
And we are in compliance with Roberts' Rules of Order.
I believe the intent was there, written over there, is question, I can say, I can see that individuals are arguing different. I believe you're, the way you've written it, you intended to amend this, amend what you previously voted on.
And Dr. Green, I'm not ruling the motion out of order, so, just for sharing that for clarity. I have done the research that I could. I did find some conflicting information. I made some phone calls to people that do trainings related to parliamentarian procedure, and it is my understanding that while the information's conflicting, we move forward because of that. Again, we don't just call stuff out of order just for fun, so with that, do you have any questions or comments related to the motion?
No, I'm done, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Melnick?
So I ask, moving forward, that... So not unlike the executive order, which was vague and confusing, so was the call for this meeting. And I think it is fair to our citizens that we write things in a simple, concise way. There was a lot of confusion, a lot of emails about "you're doing this," and I answered a few to try to redirect, to have, I had a citizen go back and read line three again so that I could point out the word "pause." Luckily, the word "pause" was in there, but sometimes, the language that we present to the community is really unfair. And just like this executive order, people have questions, and they had questions about the language, the way this was written up. So I'm just asking that, moving forward, that we put some thought into the way we present things to the public, so we do not cause confusion as a board, as a school division.
Mr. Callen?
I need to go on record, as a member of the six that has been spoken to throughout this evening and the previous week, and I think it's only appropriate that as a member of that group, that I share some thoughts. What I have witnessed is the display of a wide range of opinions on this matter, both pro and con, both consistent or widely diverse. I want to make sure that it's heard by the community, where at least I'm coming from. And this is my opinion on this matter. First thing I want to state clearly, I want the best education possible for all of the students in the Virginia Beach City Public School System, regardless of color, or creed, or orientation. I want the students that exit the school system in Virginia Beach to have a very solid education. Now achieving that is only going to be possible by having each student subjected to a process that stretches them, challenging them and pushing them beyond, at times, what they think they're capable of. And it may seem hard, and it may seem unpleasant, but that's what awaits them in life. And I don't want to diminish, dilute, or reduce the degree of difficulty that every student experiences, so that when they exit the school system and they discover life is so much harder than I thought it was gonna be at 16, I don't want them to be surprised. And part of that awareness is to be subjected to and introduced to a rigorous, demanding Part of my concern is the fact that I visit schools and am surprised at some of the discoveries that are made during those visits. One of the discoveries was, a child came to our school, said a representative of a school that will remain nameless, a child came to our school from another school in Virginia Beach in the fifth grade and could not read. And proudly, they described the process that they took in getting that child to a place where he was able to read. But my problem with this discovery was, how in the world did he get to the fifth grade and not be able to read? What happened? Where along the way did the ball get dropped? Because the implied message was, we got to the end of the first grade, and he wasn't ready, and we put him ahead anyhow. And we did the same thing for several grades until it was discovered. And I thought, how in the world is that happening? How are we gonna prepare kids for the difficulties that life brings if that's what's happening? I visit another school, a different conversation with a different person. This time, the message was, we are gonna continue to advance kids to graduation because the parent is insistent that the child graduate on time, because the one thing we don't want to have is a daughter who's 19, and she's still in the school system. So we're gonna graduate her, whether she's Whether she's ready or not. And so I'd like to share a story. That I think speaks to part of the point here, and I will ask your patience as I go through this story. It'll take me a few minutes. But I think it's indicative of the point that I'm making. Going back to point number one. I want every, every, every single student in this school system. To come away with a very, very solid, strong education that is achieved. As a result of difficult, hard things that have been encountered and not reduced or minimized. And so here's the story. Mary Ann was in her late thirties when we first met and she asked me to help her learn to read, late thirties. This was in two thousand and seven. I was the newish supervisor of a tutoring program in Manhattan aimed at adults who were trying to get their GED. Most students came in for help with essay writing or algebra, but Marion. Who had seen her three daughters through high school and into college. Wanted to get better at reading. She's thirty. She told me she was at a third grade level. But once we started working together, I discovered that it was more like first grade. This isn't unusual, as you might think. Forty-eight million adults in the U.S. read at. Or below the third grade level, and many of them struggle in ways that are almost impossible for a fluent reader to imagine. They can't order off a menu, they can't check in for a telehealth appointment or fill out a job application. Low literacy skills correlate heavily with poverty and crime and are associated with an estimated. Two point two trillion dollars per year of social services, healthcare and lost wages. This is an issue both sides of the political spectrum would love to address. The question is how? It continues on. And I'll skip sections just to make it somewhat brief. In my two decade career in this field, I have heard of only very few literacy centers that teach reading using methods that are actually proven to work. And that's because of a conflict that plagues American education. It is fundamentally a battle between a progressive mindset. And a traditional one. The former prioritizes students' inclinations, the joy of learning and the teacher's intuition. The latter wants strictness, structure. And an evidence-based curriculum. I used to favor, says the author of the article. I used to favor the intuitive method. I thought it was more creative, more humane. But I learned the hard way. When it comes to teaching reading, you need rules and feedback and a plan. To understand why reading is such a mess, we've experimented with a number of different programs. And I won't bore you with all of the details surrounding this, but step one was something referred to. You in the academic arena may be aware of this called whole words. It gave us what they describe as the look-say method. That then transitioned not whole words, but whole language. Eventually, whole language was discredited by the evidence that existed. And in its place became a successor, and that was called balanced literacy. But it's also been discredited. Now we're on to the science of reading. Which makes the case that an effective reading curriculum is sequential, methodical, and it's directly taught. It explicitly teaches the phonetic code. As well as vocabulary, word parts and other elements that are required for fluent reading. And the science of reading is steadily gaining ground in children's classrooms. Although parents and educators are still fighting to stamp out balanced literacy, whole language? It's a true relic of the past, something no serious educator would use to teach a child to read. It's painful to remember the things that I asked students like Mary Ann to do in the early years. When I began teaching adults, I had no training and knew next to nothing about the debates going on in the world of reading instruction. Also, I wholeheartedly believed in the progressive approach to education. I disliked tests and textbooks. The idea of the teacher wielding knowledge, you'll love this. The idea of the teacher wielding knowledge and power over the passive student was anathema to me. An approach better suited to Republicans and authoritarians. And if you've been there, nuns. Continuing on.
Mr. Callen, um. It's been a few minutes. Can you tie it back to the motion, please, that we can?
Back to the motion is this, I'll cut to the chase. The whole experience knocked me off my ideological pedestal. The most effective way to help my students, I realize, was to radically diverge from the progressive path. I travel my entire life. I am now as close to a traditional schoolmaster. As I ever could have imagined. I drill, I test, I say things like, no, that's wrong. Try again. There is a correct answer and I want it. Turns out, that's what the students want too. Here's the point that I'm making. Demanding, setting high expectations, not watering down, not diluting, not diminishing. When you hear as you go to schools and discover kids are being passed along for various issues. It serves as an example of what has become one of the euphemisms associated with DEI. And that's the lowering of standards. This is a result of kindness, caring, as it was mentioned, humane perspectives and attitudes. But I don't think it's leading us in the direction that we need to go, and it's for that reason. I still am in support of this issue of removing DEI. And I just wanted to go on record so that somebody has an understanding of at least where I'm coming from.
Thank you. Ms. Rogers?
Thank you. Um, while I appreciate the stories from other people in education, this is not a Virginia Beach story. What you just read was from a teacher who does not teach in Virginia Beach, who does not have a Virginia Beach experience. And everything we're talking about should be about Virginia Beach. So let me take just a moment, sorry for taking more of your time, to read the excerpt. From the article written about Mr. Harris and about our schools in twenty twenty-five. Instead of just one classroom in just one period, Ty Harris is now trying to help students of all backgrounds. Feel that sense of security and connection district ride across more than eighty schools and thousands of students. In his role as Director of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion, now Opportunity and Achievement. For Virginia Beach City Public Schools. For two years, he mined data. And ushered in a student-led coalition, student-led, that's what we're doing. In a push to create a culture where every kid from team captains to the students too nervous to raise their hands in class. Can belong in their school community. This is what we're doing, this. Still, Mr. Harris knows that he has to be intentional with how he approaches his role. He's operating in a political climate where diversity, equity, and con- inclusion initiatives have gotten caught in the backlash. With critical race theory and with several states legislating against diversity, equity, and inclusion. In Mr. Harris's own state of Virginia, the, the governor has taken aim at such programs, even remain, renaming a state office. Just to remove the word equity. This goes on to say that Mr. Harris relied on data to propose and successfully pass. An extensive plan which experts say is a rarity. He puts high schoolers at the center of efforts to revamp their school's culture through a network of student-led groups. He approaches opponents of diversity, equity, and inclusion in the community. With good-natured willingness to meet people where they are and bring them along for the ride. Leading the district's two-person office, Mr. Harris came in with a big, bold, audacious goal and then pulled in collaborators from different pockets. Of our own school district here and community to propel and refine the vision. An administrator in the district office of proposed growth and innovation. And that is who is Mr. Harris's partner in crime. I think there's a lot of misconception on what equity is, says Ty Harris. In the twenty twi- twenty-five Ed Week, Learners to Learn from Honorary. There are a lot of things that need to happen in order for us as a community to arrive at a place where we say we want to be. And it's that willingness to have those tough conversations and really dig into the work. And it goes on to talk about how. Ty Harris believes leveraging partnerships is crucial to the work that he's doing. He's retooled existing clubs, putting STEM, put a STEM, putting a STEM twist on Beach Girls Rock, that's our program. A girl, a club for girls and expanding the district's African-American male summit, which we've already talked about. To include local post-secondary institutions, so we can have our own students see what it's like to go to schools here. He leads the Equity Council, which meets bi- bi-monthly, we've already discussed that. But I think it's really important to talk about the Tide Coalition. The Tide Coalition is now representing in the district all twelve high schools with a planned push into middle schools. The next goal is to get students to focus how to better, on how to better own their own school culture. That's what we're doing. We're asking students to own their own school culture. The coalitions which meet once a month to brainstorm how to change school culture. Were created in response to a dismal number on student belonging and an internal survey. The members of the coalition aren't necessarily the same kids who raised their hand for every club or team. Principals identify students who are representative of their school's demographics who are already established student leaders. That's what we're doing. That's what we're doing in this school. So everybody's talking about, oh, DEI is a. This is what we're doing. We're creating student-led coalitions to help the culture of belonging in our schools. That's what we're rallying against. This is what we're doing. I understand that DEI, those letters are so pervasive right now and everybody's against them. But nobody has said yesterday, or I'm sorry, earlier today, two weeks ago, a month ago, nobody has said. This is what we're doing in our schools. So here it is. We're creating a coalition of students in our twelve high schools. That are coming together so they can create a better culture in their own school. That's about them. That's what we're doing. This is not illegal. This is not against Title VI. This is about a sense of belonging in our community. Why do we not want this? I don't understand. And if we actually cared about the students we say we care about, why are we not researching, whoa, what is Virginia Beach actually doing? I spent several hours with Mr. Harris so I could find out. I spent hours with him so I could ask questions. What is our district doing? How does it impact our students? What is our staff think? We have the Thrive, um, blog, is it what it's called? Is it the blog? Yes, that tells staff, hey, guess what, staff, we've got these, um, mental health supports for you and we want to help you. That's what we're doing in Virginia Beach. None of that goes against Title VI. None of that goes against the Constitution. So I just don't understand what the fear is with DEI. When nobody has actually looked at what we're doing in our schools. I did it because it was important to me to represent our students and our community successfully. And I did it because it, our students do not deserve to have programs suspended, eliminated, removed, whatever you want to call it. They don't deserve to have those, those programs taken away from them if we don't even know what they are. And I'll yield.
Mr. Cummings?
I circle back to why I, I support this motion and call it for an emergency or special meeting, I should say, that's the better term, not an emergency, a special meeting. And this comes down to court and judges and what they said in their rulings. Sitting and reading the words that they, they said, what their concerns were. Yes, it's not litigated to fullest extent, but it does identify risk. And I specifically turned to, um, the NAACP case where it talks about. The loss of constitutional freedoms for even minimal periods of time unquestionably can constitute harm. And so the desire to have a meeting and not. Waste time, or not delay it to the future, um, weeks is because. I have a desire to not cause harm, um, to our students. And that's not my words. That is coming from what is said in the case within their, um. What they said, and I think we have to take that, those, those messages seriously. And I think that we have to understand what are our First Amendment risks, what are our Fifth Amendment risks? If we are proceeding with a policy where we are actively potentially reviewing. Clubs, programs, activities, things like that. I think that does potentially infringe upon our students' First Amendment rights when we are selecting. You know, those programs. And so that's a concern to me and I have not heard, uh. Justification to why I should not be concerned about that. I think it does open up, um. I don't know, potential risk to our school. And so that's the main reason why we are here today. I think many of us read these cases and we heard about it and it warrants conversation. And I think based on what I've read, it warrants a pause. And I want to circle back just to, and I'll be brief because I know, uh, I'll just be quick and brief. You know, when we think about those kids who are in fifth grade can't read, I think about the resources that we can give them to. Be successful to find the tool, to find their ability to get to where they need to be. And that's what equity is. I worked in after-school programming in East Appalachia through a program with AmeriCorps. Where I worked with literacy development and we were successful enhancing those kids' literacy. Uh, to be at a level where they were actually finally reading at and writing at grade level. When we see a deficit, we ask what resources can we give to help them win? And that's the heart of what we're doing, uh, when we talk about equity. It's not Marxist agenda, it's not, it's convoluted. You know, Democrat-type thing. It's literally what tools can I put on your belt to make sure that you're ready for the job? And for me, you know, I see a kid, they can't, if they're not at the right level, are there questions we need to ask? Yes, of course, but how do we ensure that they have those tools to get to where they need to be to, um. To find success in their life. And so I just had that quick thought, but I do circle back. That I would challenge the public and I'd challenge my folks up here to read the cases and look through them. And see what the, these judges are saying, what their concerns are and ask, wait a second. Doesn't this need some more thought? Into the policy that we are developing? If it's, you know, the policy is labeled vague, I just don't know how we can formulate sound constitutional policy. For a school system that impacts sixty thousand some kids. I mean, I wonder kids, if, you know, we proceed down the road of what that administration wants, then they have to do a better job. Of defining terms so that it doesn't negatively impact our kids. And that's all I got. That's why I'm going to be supporting the, the pause.
Ms. Melnick?
So I don't need to buy a book. To tell me about our school division or what's happening in classrooms. We have the opportunity as school board members to experience a living book. Every day. We have the ability to visit schools and I commend my colleague, Mr. Bowen Steele. Um, who, who took on my challenge to visit all, all eighty-six schools. In his first year and he is nearly there and I commend him for that. You learn a lot when you step into our classrooms. DEI happens every day. Because that's what's supposed to happen every day. I'm sorry. To our community that DEI became such an ugly term. But if you stepped foot into our classrooms, you, you would understand. People have no idea and, uh. Before I say anything else, I want to thank any teacher that is still watching or may watch this, um, tomorrow. Thank you for what you do every day. Thank you for being there for our students. Thank you for loving them. Thank you for doing more than you have to. And just know that as a school board member, I'm in your corner, I support you. I support you. Again, I typically say this on a Tuesday night. Tomorrow, I'll be packing beach bags. And nobody up here has helped. You do not know what's in our community. We have babies that come to school with the heaviest backpacks you will ever carry. Many of you have never experienced in your long lives what six-year-olds in our division have already experienced. And to be so curt and to be so cruel in the thoughts and the words has clearly brought me to tears. You have turned real life into something so ugly. And again, many of you don't even know what happens on a daily basis. So I will be supporting my colleagues who brought forward this motion. I support that. I think a pause is fair to our community. And I will say, Madam Chair, the only thing, the only takeaway from my colleague's story is the fact that whole language was a horrible mistake. And it took away everything I learned in college. We taught to the middle, and it did nothing for nobody. And so thank you for at least recognizing that.
Thanks, Chair Williams.
Yes, thank you. Yes, many of us have children who have graduated. Many of us have grandchildren who are now attending schools. Many of us are in the schools and at events. So I think that this board and previous boards, most everybody up here has done a good job about doing that, and I appreciate that. I want to just clear something up, and I did it two weeks ago. Still, unfortunately, there's some misinformation. This resolution does nothing. We will not be disbanding special education. That is a federal law. I have a child and a grandchild who have IEPs, and my child was very successful. That will continue. Our free and reduced lunches will continue. ESL, academies, tutoring, ADC, recovery school, remedial and advanced courses, foreign languages, sports, field trips, those will continue. So I just want to make sure that we're clear about that. Our teachers will continue doing a great job. They will continue loving our children. They will continue meeting the standards. They will continue to encourage children to do the best and meet their potential. So I will stay firm in my vote as of two weeks ago. And I thank everybody who came to speak, whether we agree or disagree. And I appreciate those who were very civil and respectful. I know this is a very passionate subject, and I really thank all those who were good examples to students who are listening and looking tonight about how we speak to one another. And so again, I appreciate you coming and appreciate what you had to say. Thank you so much.
Ms. Felton.
Thank you, Chair Brown, and thank you for the opportunity. And I'd just like to say that going through this process set me back to think about over 70 years ago, 1954, how we went through the changes of getting education integrated over 70 years ago. And it just, you know, it's just reminiscent of things that you have to fight for and things you have to push and keep together. I'd like to thank my students who came forth. I'd like to thank my students who had those one-on-one conversations with me. And I need to let them know, to reassure them, that whatever be done tonight or further on, I will still support you. We want you to know that this school system will continue to embrace your needs. I know perception when your specialty, like special education or whatever the program is not being directly attacked. You know, you can't see the other person, other side, or what they're thinking and how they feel about things as well. I still remember the student asking me, she said, "Now that you're going to, now that you all have gutted the education, diversity policy, where does that leave me?" More than one said, "Where does it leave me? Will we still continue to have us safe and inclusive? Will I still feel vested in this education?" Yes, we educated some renowned students. Even my children went through. And they're very, mostly are very successful in what they've done. Gone to be entrepreneurs and working at shipyards and even flying airplanes, doctors, and their lawyers as well. So yeah, the school system gave them a step up. But I'm going to support my colleagues on the pause because I think there's been other things that have come through, even listening to the students. Listening to the students and their cry, their look on their face. Just give us a chance, pause it, and let's work it through. I am on the Policy Review Committee. And when I first walked in and I came back after a couple of weeks or almost a month after burying my husband, and when I looked at that policy, which stood not only with words, but it meant a lot to the staff and the teachers, they felt vested. They felt aware that I'm a part of this system. That policy did that. And to come back to see it, as some of my colleagues said, redlined. But I said it was gutted. Gutted to the bare essence of what could have been. So we're going to move forward. We have a PRC meeting on the 21st, and that'll probably be at the top of our agenda. And I'll see exactly how we're going to roll this out. I would have hoped that we were in legal compliances when we did this, to ask for a pause and look like all that we did and all that we reached for, we still, we looked like we were not in compliance in having it correctly right as to what we were asking. So for that cause, for that cause, allegedly, we can't move forward with it because it's not legally written. It's not legally asked. But I'll say tonight, I will support my colleagues and vote for the pause. Thank you.
Dr. Green.
Thank you. And I also want to add, here we are about a week away from Brown versus Board of Education, Ms. Felton, May 17th. Seventy-one years. But also, the importance of the financial piece. Let's be clear. We have a workshop scheduled next week to talk about the implications of the funding in terms of what will happen or not happen. And that's very important, I think, for the public to know because a lot of the programs that were, or budget line items that were sent to us upon the requests from the last board meeting are programs or funding sources that are taking hits at the federal level. So please do not assume that nothing will be changing financially, regardless of whether you have signed that agreement or not.
Okay, seeing no more discussion. Ms. Lanetti, can you just clarify for the board that the motion is yes to pause, no not to pause? Correct, okay. All right, so I'm going to read this again because that's what we have to do. "We will now vote on the motion to amend previous vote, namely to amend the April 8, 2025 school board resolution to comply with legal obligations in exchange for receiving federal financial assistance to pause the below-listed portions of the April 8 resolution until the federal courts have ruled whether Executive Order 14190 can be enforced, specifically Sections A, Resolution Sections 1, 3, 4, 5, and 6; B, Resolution Section 2, the second sentence regarding suspension of educational program offerings that do not comply with the above federal guidance, including but not limited to the Equity Plan, the Equity Dashboard, and any educational program offering that would not comply." So I call for the vote. Mine isn't showing up.
How would you like to vote? So Madam Chair, we have five ayes and five nays, so the motion is lost.
Great, it is 10:19 PM, and we are adjourned.